Go live. Cheers, Richard. Thank you. Can I ask members to turn the cameras off, please?
Good life, Chair.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for coming to this meeting, this virtual meeting of the County Council, Monmouthshire County Council, Thursday 27th of January 2022. Today is a day of reflection, of course. It is the Holocaust Memorial Day. And that in itself is obviously a very profound day for the remembrance of the losses that took place. And also closer to home, we have lost a very dear friend and colleague in our own ranks. So I'll come on to that in a second. First of all, I'll go through the agenda in sequence. Apologies for absence. Nicola, do we have any apologies? Or Richard, do we have any apologies?
Hi, Chairman. No apologies. I've received.
Thank you very much. Members, any declarations of interest?
Can I offer some apologies, please, Chairman?
Sorry, yeah, please. Sheila?
Yeah, Councillor Bob Greenland.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Do we have any other apologies? Dimitri?
Not apologies, but a declaration of interest, Chair. I don't know if you want to do apologies first?
Yeah, if you've got any apologies. Does anyone else have any other apologies? No, in that case, declarations of interest, please.
A declaration of interest on the motion by Councillor Tudor Thomas. I will be carrying a personal prejudicial interest and leave the meeting.
Thank you very much, Councillor Petrucci. Thank you. Any other members? I can take them as and when, as we go through, in case someone finds something they wasn't aware of. We haven't had any public questions, which takes us to item number four, Chairman's Announcement and Receipt of Petitions. Like I said when I opened the meeting, it is a very sad day for us as a council. We've lost a very dear friend, a colleague, and someone who I think everyone in the council holds very dear or held very dear. Councillor Peter Clark passed away peacefully at home on the 10th of January, just a short while ago. And so our thoughts go to Jan, his wife, and all their friends and family who are working through this process themselves. So what I'd like to do now is to go to members for their comments, and I'll start that by going to Richard John. Councillor Richard John, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. One of the very hardest things to do is to say goodbye. Today is one of the most, it's one of the saddest occasions for our council as we reflect on the tragic loss of our friend Peter Clark. Today was always going to be a difficult day for us, as it's 12 months to the day since we lost another past chairman of our council, our dear friend David Dovey. Peter Clark was born in Royal Leamington Spa, and he moved to Wales in the 1960s, becoming a quantity surveyor initially in Cymbran, and went on to build his own home nearby in Croosakiliog. He married Jan in 1972, and a year later, they bought the Glenaraven House in Asc and converted it into a small hotel. In 1985, Peter gave up his career in the construction industry and joined Jan full-time running the Glenaraven and helped it grow and flourish into the prestigious hotel, restaurant and wedding venue it is today. And I know that a number of us, myself included, had our wedding receptions at the Glenaraven. And so many people have worked at the hotel over the years, and they all become, they all became members of Peter's extended family. Peter was elected to Gwent County Council for the Asc district in 1989, and following reorganisation was elected to Monmouthshire in 1995 as the member for Langirby Valley. He was really proud to be a councillor, but nothing gave him more pride than wearing his chairman's chains of office from 2010 to 11, and then again, most recently between 2018 and 2019. Peter represented us on a range of outside bodies, including the Police and Crime Panel. He was very involved with Monmouthshire Housing Association. I spoke a few days ago with the Gwent Police and Crime Commissioner, who I know will miss the valuable and informed contributions that Peter made. Never partisan, he is desperately missed by all his friends there and also here in Monmouthshire and particularly on the Planning Committee, which he's served with such distinction over so many years. Peter was the father of our council. It was a role he took enormous pride in. He played a paternal role in our group and always looked out for younger members. He sat next to me and Sarah in the chamber, and it was a privilege for us to be able to benefit from his fatherly advice. Sometimes quiet, reserved and unassuming, he was a real champion for younger people. He had a love of music and championed opportunities for younger people to benefit from this shared passion. When he was chairman, Gwent Music, with whom he had a long association, was his chosen charity. He was a longstanding school governor at Asc Church in Wales Primary School and at Cillian Comprehensive School. The RNLI was another cause that was close to his heart. Always respectful, sometimes he'd have a wicked smile or glint in his eye. Occasionally, in a long debate, you'd think he might have nodded off for a moment, and then he would come out with a point so powerful and persuasive, they would cut through an argument with a knife, like a knife, and get right to the nub of an issue. He was a man who was not afraid to show his emotions, and I'm sure he'd be very forgiving of us showing ours today. That said, he was never one to crave the limelight and would might even be embarrassed by being the centre of attention this afternoon. He always made sure that high standards were adhered to at all times. Tomorrow, he will pass by County Hall for the last time. And when I was walking in this morning, seeing ground maintenance teams outside trimming the hedges and smarting the place up, I thought Peter would really approve. The last time I saw Peter was just before he went on holiday with Jan in the autumn. He spoke at the gathering we held to celebrate Peter Fox's election to the Senedd. The two Peters have had a particularly close relationship, having been councillors together since 1997. Peter was so proud to see Peter Fox elected to the Senedd, and he gave a speech that afternoon reflecting on Peter's 13 years as leader of this council. Peter was someone who never sought the limelight, but when he spoke, everyone stopped what they were doing and they were hanging on his every word. He presented Peter with a painting of this building, County Hall, that was specially painted by his brother. I went to see Peter several times during his short illness, and I feel so grateful that he wasn't in pain and that his decline wasn't prolonged. Even towards the end, he seemed so peaceful. Jan described his gentle passing so beautifully. She said it was like a candle being blown out. A few hours after hearing the news, my group came together on Teams. We weren't able to hug each other, but we shared memories of Peter. We cried and we smiled and recalled the times that we'd spent together. At this desperately sad time, our thoughts are with Jan, who throughout Peter's ill health had been a tower of strength. My mum also died of a brain tumour 20 years ago, and for me, it was the period after the funeral that was the toughest, when life goes on, when everyone starts to get back to normal. But when you've suffered the loss of someone so close as a friend, a family member, life will never go back to how it was. We have to adjust to life without that person, and it's hard. Jan is part of our family, the family of our group, the family of our council, and we will do everything we can to support her in the days, weeks and months ahead. Peter will never be forgotten. His portrait will hang here in the heart of County Hall, the only man ever to have been chairman of Monmouthshire Council twice, the father of the Conservative group, the father of our council, and we will always remember him. Thank you very much.
Chair, you're on mute.
Apologies, everyone. Thank you very much, Councillor Richard John. Councillor Dimitri Petrucci?
Thank you, Chair. I was not part of Peter Clark's political group, but I can certainly recognise some of the themes Councillor John raised there, particularly the paternal, looking out for young members when they first got elected to council. And he certainly did that for me, and he was always warm, always offered advice, always welcoming. I remember I bumped into him and Jan at the Abigavenny Food Festival, and we had a good joke for about five, 10 minutes. He wasn't particularly partisan. He, well, if he was, he was in his political group, but with us, he was always more than civil, a good character to get on with, a true gentleman. And I've met Jan several times at all the various functions through County Council, and she is a delight. And they're both a delight, and I am thinking of her at this time. I also remember when he, with Jan, offered me a tie, a Monmouthshire County Council tie. Apparently, Monmouthshire used to give out ties, branded ties, and was quite keen. I had a branded tie. He'd probably be disapproving me of not having a tie at all today. I suspect he would tell me off. He's a great loss. I know from members of my group who are on the Planning Committee, the tower he was on that committee and the ruthlessly independent views he took on each and every application. I know I've had several comments on that, and he was always looked upon as giving kind of sage advice and wisdom, having done it for so many years, and given his previous career as well. And he's a great loss to this council, and I really feel for his wife. And on behalf of the Labour Group, we will miss him and give all our condolences to John.
Thank you very much, Dimitri. Councillor Frances Taylor, please.
Thank you, Chair. I was fortunate enough to know Peter Clark for many years before becoming a county councillor. I knew Peter from when I joined Gwent Police Authority many, many years ago, about 15 years ago now. And I would absolutely agree that not only as, well, at the time, what was considered to be a very young member of the Police Authority and also one of the only, well, the only other woman apart from the chair on the Police Authority. He was indeed warm, welcoming, kind and always available to offer advice. Again, I was fortunate to meet Jan on a number of occasions before becoming a county councillor and since. And as everyone has said, it's Jan and who's certainly in my thoughts because I know what an incredible partnership they were. And finally, I know that he also treated many of the people that were part of his Glenaraven and Samons very much as his family, and I'm sure he will be greatly missed too. And finally, as a member of the Planning Committee, I shall not forget him always striving to achieve very high standards and his love of proper eves on houses, I think. So on behalf of the Independent Group, we wish to offer condolences at the very sad loss, sad loss to all of us and to Monmouthshire County Council, Peter Clark.
Thank you very much. Councillor Jeremy Becker?
Thank you, Chair. I didn't know Peter for very long, only this last term when I was elected. And I have to say, what people have said about him being welcoming and supportive of new members is exactly right. He was always had a fantastic sense of humour, and I remember the first year, he gave me chocolates at Christmas for having the worst shirts in the council. And that was a very kind, and I've toned it down for him deliberately today. So, you know, he was great on planning. He did have a good sense of humour, but when he was being serious, he was very even-handed, and it was wisdom. He did look at each application on its merits. And, you know, the time that I got to work with him, you know, I will certainly look at him as a template of how we should conduct ourselves, if perhaps not satorily. I'm sure Linda will be speaking for the Lib Debs, who knew him for longer than I, but on behalf of our group, I certainly would offer our condolences to his family and our heartfelt sympathies.
Thank you very much, Jess. Thank you for that. I'll go to the members now who have expressed a wish to speak in the chat bar function. So Councillor Maureen Powell, please.
Thank you, Chairman. It is many, many years since I first met Peter. Probably one of the first times would be at one of the dinners that were held at the Glenaraven to do with the association. And I've always found him such a loyal and such a great friend. He was chairman, vice-chairman to me when I was chairman the second time, and he was so loyal, and he was such a good supporter on my left-hand side. And I felt very honoured that I was allowed to have Peter as my vice-chairman because it was all of a bit of a sudden that time. We were all told at the last minute, and he filled the spot without even knowing before he was going to do it. We both had similar likes and dislikes. We shared our loyalty to the Gwent Music, and I'm so pleased that Gwent Music is one of his charities, which was lovely. We go into these concerts, and there was always Peter and Jan there, always there together, and it was such a nice thing to see that loyalty. I absolutely feel for Jan. It must be hurtful for her, but she's got the pleasure of knowing she looked after him so well, and they've been such a wonderful pair together. I had the sadness of was going to go and see him on the Monday, and we were coming back at the 4.49 and the phone rang, and it was Bob to say, I'm sorry, you can't go because Peter's gone. But there we are. He's looking down at us today, and I hope he's smiling. And my love and sympathy go to Jan. Thank you.
Maureen, thank you very much for that. Thank you. Councillor Sarah Jones, please.
Thank you, Chair. And Maureen, I'm sure he's smiling. And like others have said, for me, Peter really was the father of the council, and it wasn't just about being father of the council in terms of the number of years he'd served or the experience that he had, but the way he was such a father figure to us all. And as others have said, from the day I was elected, right up until at the end of last year, he was always there to provide advice and support to us youngsters, as he called us. And it was valued so much, and he really did strive for excellence in public life. And I think he was a real statesman figure for us in this county. And he wasn't just a colleague and friend for me. He was also my own ward councillor. And I enjoyed annoying him on a regular occasion in terms of my requests for slow signs and pothole repairs in the ward. And he always had, like Richard said, that cheeky smile, that sort of wicked glint in his eye. But I think underneath that, we can all remember him as the perfect gentleman. He really was. And he always used to want to stop for a chat. That was one thing I'll always remember about Peter, especially for me, that if that chat was around skiing, he'd be asking if I'd been on a skiing trip recently. And we both shared this passion for the mountains and a love for winter sports. And I really wish I could have gone skiing with Peter because I think he would have been pretty nifty on those slopes. And as Richard said as well, I really enjoyed sitting next to Peter in full council, you know, whether it be sharing our approval or disapproval of the proceedings or to have a little lighthearted joke or just to gently nudge him when things started going on a little bit. I don't really have any more words that could do justice today, and everyone else has spoken really adequately. But I just want to finish by saying that I will miss him terribly, and I know we all will. We in this council have lost one of the cornerstones of our authority, but I know his memory will always be really deeply rooted, both in County Hall and in that wider Asc community. And I just want to give all my love to Jan and her family. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Sarah. Councillor Sheila Woodhouse, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I just say that Peter and Jan are the most special friends to all of us, always have been and always will be truly remarkable people, both of you, John and Peter. I know you're with us. I know you're listening. We've got to get this right for you because you like things done properly. You're a man of great, how can I say, great standards, high standards, absolutely devoted to getting the best out of everybody, for the community, for the council, for your family. And we hear so much now about what Peter's done and how everybody valued him. And I just think Peter never spoke about himself. Lots of lovely things have been said. We all keep saying supportive. I keep hearing that word when he asked me to be his vice-chairman. That was absolutely the most fantastic experience. I was really honoured to sit alongside him, as Maureen mentioned, when he was her vice-chairman. He taught me so much. He taught all of us so much. And he always switched things around to you and how you were getting on and can I help you with this? And when we went virtual and the meetings were being conducted remotely, he was on the phone, always worried about everybody else and anxious to offer that support. He was a wonderful chairman. On the two occasions, I was fortunate to have known Peter and John when they were carrying out their civic duties on both occasions, because Chris was on the council when he was his chair for the first time, and always loved every minute, keeps in touch with all the previous chain gangs, I know of that. But once a friend, you were a friend for life because Peter and John never, never, sort of ever stopped caring for people, supporting people. And it is just, oh, second nature. Thank you, John, for allowing us to visit when he came home. I think that was wonderful. It was a short illness, and luckily, you know, he was able to come home, and that was absolutely amazing. So thank you, Peter, for all you've done for us. You'll always be with us. I'm glad you mentioned the photographs, Richard, in the corridor because he's there and he always will be much over this council, and that's led to Jan and all the family. Thank you, Chairman.
Sheila, thank you ever so much for those lovely words. Councillor Roger Harris, please.
Thank you, Chair, and I think we've just heard one of the most moving tributes for any member that I've ever heard in my time in this council. I miss Peter very much. I sat next to him many, many times in the back of the car as a delegated panel sped all over the county and delighted in calling me the champagne socialist for some reason or another, I'm not sure about, but he loved the county. He loved the planning department to get it right for the county. He was always disparaging about my advocacy for 21st century buildings coming into the area, but in the end, he learned to live with it. I miss Peter very much, and I thank Jan for lending him to me at times, and I'll always fondly remember him. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Roger. I'll go to Councillor Linda Guppy next, please.
Hi. Sorry, just turning everything on. Well, what terrible sad news. And Jan, if you're listening, we're just thinking about you. I felt very strongly that I had to speak today. Known Peter, I'm getting all upset, for 14 years, but he was a household name in my family. He worked with my dad, one of the first councillors on Gwent County Council. They worked together. They were years. He welcomed me as a new councillor those many years ago. He told my dad, lovely girl, but she's wearing the wrong colour party, Rosette. But he never held that against me, always respectful, always looked out for me. He was a true ambassador for Monmouthshire County Council. And if anybody was at the chamber when he did his final speech on his first chairmanship, he was in tears. There was such pride. He was in tears, and there was a lot of other people in tears within that council chamber as well. His passion to support the charities, Gwent Music Support, we often bumped into each other, always asked about my children who were a part of Gwent Music Support. And I've said this before, I can remember seeing Peter or thinking I saw Peter kneeling on the floor outside the Albert Hall, wondering what the heck this man was doing. But what it was, it was in the dark, and he couldn't see how much money he needed to put in the parking meter. And it would have been a lot of money parking outside the Albert Hall. He didn't know I was there, and I turned around and said, that's the wrong place to be knighted, Peter. So we had quite a little giggle at that time. He's a household friend. He's a household name within this house. And myself and Andrew, I will miss him dearly. He also is a true gentleman. Often, if I walked up the County Hall with him, he would not let me walk on his right-hand side. He would apologise and say, will you please mind walking on the inside? And his standards were always of the highest. He would be horrified, and he was horrified when members did not turn up in proper dress. The ear bashings that I used to get, I'm sorry, Jess, because you wore those fancy, fancy shirts, he said, get a tie, tell him to get a tie on, get him to get a tie on. And I hope maybe at the next meeting, everybody will wear a tie in respect of Peter because he would have liked that. And I do see on his funeral arrangements that everybody isn't asked to wear a blue tie. And I know he'll be missed on the school governors as well. I heard very soon that he died because of his hard work within Asc School, and that mustn't be forgotten because I know he was a governor on other schools as well. Just to say, he'll be sadly missed by everybody, and I think everybody that he come in contact, he touched their hearts. Thank you.
Linda, thank you ever so much for those lovely words. Councillor Giles Howard, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. I came to know Peter when I joined the council for the first time in 1999, and he proved to be one of those people you can get on with regardless of the political affiliation. And as Dimitri noted, he had a great interest in guiding and helping out new members. And as members will know, I worked for Peter at the Glenaraven for a number of years, as I was also a student at the time. Although I was very grateful and the team and management were great, I realised that I preferred being his customer. So as a former employee and colleague, I appreciated the kindness and friendship of Peter and Jan, and the example of which was when they took me to a surprise lunch at the Savoy. This was during a trip that Peter had organised to see Les Mis, although certainly not the first time that Peter and Jan had seen it, as they were frequent visitors to the West End. What was evident throughout my association with him was Peter's professionalism, his eye for detail, high standards and etiquette. I shared some of his interests, particularly his love of music and planning. And as a fellow member of the Planning Committee, I was always glad to see he was keen that we got a cup of coffee and a bun. I've had massive respect for Peter ever since I first met him, and I'd often call him for chats and personal advice. I can only agree with those who have shared their thoughts of him, that his passing leaves an enormous hole.
Thank you, Giles. Councillor Brian Strong, please.
Thank you, Chair. Peter and I have been friends for more than 40 years. We first met at a birthday lunch, which was held at the Glenaraven, where at the time, it was a three-bedroom house, I believe, but a large one. And at that time, Jan was the cook and Peter was the waiter. We didn't know quite what to expect, possibly something from faulty towers, but it turned out to be exactly the opposite. It's wonderful food, and Peter couldn't have been more attentive. Obviously, over the years, the business has grown, and Peter has always, was always a stickler for good manners and punctuality. He set a very high standard and expected the same from all his staff. Many teenagers had their first work experiences at the Glenaraven, and the number of previous employees who contacted Jan since Peter's death has been really tremendous. I'm sure it's been a great, something that Jan will appreciate greatly. something that Jan will appreciate greatly. My son was 14 when he first started at work at the Glenraven and he's been a member of staff ever since. Peter and Jan have been like second parents to him. And he and other staff were promised a share in the business by Peter. And true to his word, that this took place many years ago and we couldn't be more grateful for that. Peter always had time for others. He had a wicked sense of humour and was always there to help if needed. Mary and I treasure the, the many wonderful memories we have and will miss him greatly. Thank you much.
Thank you very much, Brian. Councilor Anne Webb, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman, and lovely to see you here, Jan, this afternoon. I'm going to take you back a bit, Jan, to mention a few words by John Straddling Thomas, if I may please. So to you, I say one simple thing. Live life to the full. One life's enough and passes fast and faster. But remember this, death is no disaster. When I say adieu, be happy and forgiving. Life was made for you, Peter, and life was made for living. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Anne. It was lovely. I'll go to our chief executive now, Paul Matthews.
Thank you, Chair. A very emotional afternoon and I think it's absolutely appropriate, members, that you you also hear a perspective from the, the officers of your organisation. I've chosen my background very carefully this afternoon because Peter was so proud of Monmouthshire. It was a place that mattered to him. It was in his heart. And, and I think that's the man that, that your officers met. When I reflect on the words that I've heard from, from you all, Peter was a gentleman. He was also a gentle man. He was emotional. He wasn't scared to, to show his emotions. He was a good man. He was one of the wisest men, I think, that I've known. And I was very, very fortunate to spend some time with Peter in, in his final days at home. And it will be one of the honours of my life, actually, to, to speak at his funeral on, on Saturday. Never lose sight that Peter was also an incredibly effective councillor. He never, ever made up the numbers. He was clear what he was about. He had a ferocity when he needed it to speak for his residents, but he always had a kindness. And he was that man that always had the minute when you needed the minute. Sometimes when you speak after 10, 12, 15 other people, there are very few things left to be said. That's not the case here. There are so many things that, that haven't been covered. Because this was a very rich life. This was a man who lived many lives simultaneously. And touched more people, I think, than he will ever, ever come to realise. I first met him on the very first day of my recruitment to hopefully come to Monmouthshire. And I'll never forget it. It was a, it was a trial by volifor and that, those things that used to happen. Interviewed over a plate of food and the, the task was to circulate as many members as possible. I didn't have to circulate to Peter because he came to me and I can remember it as if it was yesterday. He said, young man, I feared good things about you. Don't let me down. Bring everything that you've got and it will be just fine. I needed to hear that at, at that moment in time. I needed to take a moment to calm myself and organise my thoughts. So in one of the biggest moments of my life, in a way that he didn't understand, he was there and he was guiding me. And I think he's done that for so many people over the course, well, of, of a lifetime. Peter has lived his life well. I think he has been honest. I think his integrity is shown through. But I'll end, if I may, Chair, with, again, an important commentary from an officer about a councillor. I think that councillor Peter Clark was a man ahead of his time. He told me, he spoke to me about the way that he, he felt more settled in Monmouthshire County Council than perhaps he had done in Gwent County Council. And the reason for that was the culture. He felt as if he belonged. He felt that other people belonged. And, and he felt it easier to be respectful. And I don't think I've ever come across an officer in this organisation when talking about Peter that hasn't used the word respect. I don't think I've ever come across an officer that's had anything other than a good word to say for Peter. But we've always known it's about standards. We've never, ever, ever wanted to let him down. We respected the fact that when he was the chair, there was a bollard in his parking space and we never took his parking space. When he allowed us to use his office, we left it immaculate, because otherwise we would not use his office again. Peter touched the hearts of the officers of Monmouthshire County Council, or certainly those that had the honour to, to come into contact with him. He'll be sorely missed. He leaves a legacy. And, and I agree with the commentary that this is a man that will never, ever disappear from, from the heart and the minds of those that have served with him. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, members. Thank you very much for all your lovely comments. So, members, we've, we've lost a colleague in councillor Peter Clark, twice chairman of this council. And we've also lost a friend in Peter Clark. As Paul Matthews said then, Peter would always give a minute to us. And so I'd like us now to take a minute in silence in respect of Peter. Thank you. Rest in peace, Peter Clark. Thank you very much, members. Okay, so moving on through the agenda as we must. The next part is receipt of petitions. I've received two petitions. The first from councillor Dimitri Petrucci and the second from councillor Debbie Blakeborough. So I'll ask councillor Petrucci to speak to his first. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I present a petition from Chapstone Borough residents in relation to the closure of Chapstone High Street. It's been signed by electronically by over 200 people and additionally physically by over 100. And it relates to the closure of Chapstone Town Centre and the lack of consultation with residents and the businesses affected by the closure. The closure was initially meant to be temporary due to the COVID pandemic, creating space for businesses to receive customers at safe distance. And it has remained in place and looks like it's going to continue to remain in place. And with that view, many residents and businesses have expressed concern that they haven't been properly consulted on this measure. This includes Chapstone Town Council, Chapstone Society, Chapstone Chamber of Commerce, who haven't had a proper and formal consultation on the closure of Chapstone Town Centre Road for cars. Now, it, it is, it is controversial. Some people are massively for the closure, some people are massively against. I think what people more than anything want, just their voice heard on the issue, rather than taking a particular position. The people and its businesses should be heard and that's what this petition is about.
Thank you, Dimitri, and I can confirm receipt of that petition. Thank you. Councillor Debbie Blakeborough.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I've been asked to present to this council a petition signed by the residents of North Community, and this is a village in the Trelick United Ward. Through this petition, they're asking the council to bring in speed limits below the present national 60 mile per hour limit. And that's in the North and surrounding area, which includes Merriland and Pennybarne. I, I, I think we all have this on our doorstep really, but like many villages, North was not built for the volume and the speed of, of modern day traffic. The North Village has narrow, single lane, windy roads. There's no pavements, no street lights, not that they want any street lights, I hasten to add. And, and the roads run by a very busy village hall, a play park, open driveways to people's homes. So it's actually quite a busy village and, and with the speeding traffic, it just makes it very dangerous for walkers, cyclists, those with horses. Residents who are just wanting to walk along to meet their neighbours and, and more worryingly, children who are walking to the bus stop for the school bus. And as we know, if a child is hit by a car at 40 mile per hour, there's a 90% chance that that child could be killed. So the petition is really asking for safer roads and safer communities. So could I ask the council to provide myself and the Trelick United Community Council, ask them to send me a timeframe of when the North and other villages in the Trelick United area will be included in the 20 mile per hour zone scheme? And I'm asking this because it's been going on such a long time with this, these 20 mile per hour zone schemes. And, and if I could just ask, please, that I could have a reply in the next five working days. Thanks for your time, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Blakeborough. I confirm receipt of your petition. Councillor Simon Howarth has expressed a wish to speak. Councillor Howarth, Simon?
Thank you, Chair, and I, I, I'm sorry, but I did think it'd be right that before we go any further in the meeting with all the sadness that we have spoke about in the last last 10 minutes, 20 minutes, reference to our dear friend Peter, that we celebrate the award that our fellow colleague Maureen has achieved. And I do feel that now is the time that we do that, because the weeks will move on till our next meeting and then we'll be into further. So Maureen, I, I, as an independent, the independent group would like to say congratulations on your award. And it's well deserved. You and John worked tirelessly for, for Monmouthshire and for the people that you represent. I've known you for many, many years, Maureen, and you haven't changed. You're still very passionate, like our previous colleague, Peter. Monmouthshire blood running through you and, but what most important for you, Maureen, is, is you never give up. You are always there and you, your challenges that you have, Maureen, you never let them go. You're a conservative member. If I said there was a stick of rock out there and cut it in half, I'm sure Conservative will come through Maureen Powell. And that's how you are, Maureen. You, we will never, ever change you. You'll never, ever cross sides. You never have a bad word to say about anybody on the basis of is you're very loyal to them people through and through. So, Maureen, congratulations. And I, 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 I wouldn't say this unless I really meant it, Maureen. You are one of the most loyal person I can ever think of as, as a Conservative. But well done, Maureen.
Thank you very much, Simon. And congratulations from us all to Maureen. And thank you very much, Simon, for bringing that forward. Maureen, do you want to respond to that?
Well, thank you very much, Simon, but I wasn't expecting that, because today is Peter's day, not mine. But I would like to say that it's, it came out of the blue. I wasn't expecting it. And I, I sometimes I have to pinch myself to know it, it's true. But one of the things, I'll bring us back to Peter a bit now. Peter and I used to argue who was the oldest. And I knew I was the oldest. And it seemed so wrong that he's gone before me. And so I've got to stop here now and I've got to do my best carrying on despite, live up to my award. But also do it for Peter's sake as well. But thank you very much to everybody who has congratulated me over the last couple of weeks. It, it's been very kind of you all. And I'm sure there are many people that work just as hard as me and I've just been the lucky one. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Maureen. Thank you very much, members all. Right, we'll go on through the agenda to item five, which is the reports to council. Five point one, council tax reduction scheme 2223. Councillor Phil Murphy, please.
Thank you, Chair. And if I can just get the report up, which has just decided to escape me. Right, so the purpose of this report is to present the arrangements for the implementation of the council tax reduction scheme and to approve it for 202223. And agree to adopt the amendments to the regulation proposed by Wales Government as detailed in point 3.7. A form that the annual uprating amendments will be carried out each year without a requirement to adopt the whole council tax reduction scheme. So the recommendations include note in the making of the council tax reduction scheme, adopt the provision within the regulations and any annual uprating regulations in respect of the scheme for the financial year 202223, including the discretionary elements previously approved by the council's local scheme from the 1st of April 2022. A failure to adopt the local scheme by the 31st of January will result in the default scheme being imposed on the council. The Welsh scheme's government's regulations for that year ensure claimants can continue to receive a reduction up to 100% of their council tax bill, depending upon their income and household circumstances. So although the national scheme has been approved within the prescribed requirements, regulations, there's a limited discretion given to the council to apply additional additional discretionary elements that are more generous than the national scheme, which provide for additional administrative flexibility. Council approved the discretionary areas to be applied, they're listed below in 5.2, following public consultation. It's not proposed to change them in any way, therefore no further consultation is required at this stage. So I go back to the recommendations, Chair, and just summarise it by saying this is a scheme we've had for some time. We aren't altering it. We have to adopt it by the 31st of January so that our scheme is the one which applies. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Do you have a second? I'll take them as, I'll take them as being moved by yourself and then we're looking for a second, please.
Happy to second, Chair.
Thank you. Members have had the opportunity to raise their hands to speak. No members have expressed that to speak. So the recommendations have gone out in the agenda pack. Could we have a vote function, please? Indeed. And the recommendations have gone out into the pack at 2, 2.1, 2.2. No need for me to read them, because obviously members will have that already. And we'll just wait for that vote function to come into the bar. Okay, so members will see that now in the bar. Okay, so I can confirm that that has, as those recommendations have been accepted. So thank you very much, members. We'll move on then to item 5.2, implementing the South East Wales Corporate Joint Committee. Councillor Richard John, please.
Thank you very much. Well, this is quite a long report, but in essence, the subject matter is really quite straightforward. The Local Government and Elections Act 2021 requires the four regions of Wales to establish corporate joint committees. Monmouthshire is in South East Wales with our nine partners in the Cardiff Capital Region. By law, we have to establish the corporate joint committee and set a budget this month. The budget is nominal and will not impact on our budget strategy for 2022 to 2023. There are important process issues that still need to be worked through. There are important process issues that still need to be worked through on VAT, corporation tax, pension fund admittance status, which means the enactment of the corporate joint committee will be delayed until June 2022. It will focus on three things, on strategic land use planning, a regional transport plan, and the regional economy. So the body cannot drift from those three priorities without agreement. It will be governed by a joint cabinet made up of the 10 leaders of the 10 local authorities with one vote each. It's a sovereign body. It will be able to employ people, to enter into contracts and hold assets. And over time, the structures of the city deal will migrate to the corporate joint committee to keep governance straightforward. Initially, we weren't advocates of a corporate joint committee, but that argument was yesterday. Setting one up is now a legal requirement. So our unrelenting focus now is on what we need to do to shape it for the benefit of residents in Mammooshia and more widely in South East Wales. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much. Do you have a second for your recommendations?
Happy to second, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'll go to the chat bar now to Councilor Simon Howarth, as expressed to wish to speak.
Yes, Chairman. Thank you. I just want to ask the leader there as reference to the comments he made there about the city deal. It does remind me of something that is going to be overseeing something which the city deal was all about, and he didn't mention it in his statement there. Could he just elaborate a little bit more of where we're going to go with all this? Because the city deal, it seems to like just being washed away there, and all that, all them things that we talked about, and all them things we were trying to do there within the city deal. We, as Mammooshia, don't hear anything about it. Not a damn thing about it. We haven't heard nothing. We don't have any talk about it. We don't hear any, there's nothing from the Welsh Government on it, or there's nothing which comes to light about the city deal. So I would urge the leader of the council to look into where we as members have an update, and then we can decide then on a way forward with the city deal, because we feel excluded as members. It seems as though as there's certain individuals are involved with the city deal, and that is it. So officers or cabinet members, come to your members. We're the decision body as well. You know, and we voted to implement and fund the city deal. I think it's well over a million pound we invested to start with in the city deal. Give us members an update. You know, I mean, you can have as many committees as you want, but at the end of the day, we are the sovereign body, because we are the decision makers of the city deal for Mammooshia. So if you take that into consideration, then 10 local authorities, how many members are involved within the city deal? Very few. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councilor John, do you want to respond to some of those now?
I'll come in at the end, if that's okay, Chair.
Absolutely. Councilor Dimitri Petruni.
Thank you, Chair. I look to Councilor John to provide some sense of reassurance to me and perhaps other members regarding the governance of this committee. I note that there will be a subcommittee that, and I quote, will review and scrutinise the committee's financial affairs. From that, I have two questions. It's not clear to me, although I might have missed it, who will form that subcommittee? How will that membership be decided upon? Is that lay members? Would that be members from other local authorities? I've just looked for Councilor John's guidance on that. And the governance seems to be focused on more the financial affairs, quite specifically. I was just wondering, is that the entire remit of this, well, the subcommittee and to scrutinise? Is it just, can that committee just scrutinise financial affairs and nothing else? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Petruni. Councilor John?
Sorry, I was struggling with my microphone there. I think the chief executive is going to come in on the point that Councilor Petruni just made. But in terms of the reassurances I can offer to Simon Howarth on the point he made about including members, absolutely, we need to ensure that members are with us on this journey. That's exactly why, ahead of this debate, we put on a members briefing a week last Monday. I don't know whether Councilor Howarth was unable to attend, but, you know, we're more than happy to make those events more regular so that when there are updates, we can ensure that members are all in the loop on them and are aware of any developments. You know, there's no intent here to keep people in the dark. That's exactly why we put on that members seminar, to update everyone last week.
Thank you very much. I'll invite our chief executive, Paul Matthews.
Thanks, Chair. I think both good questions. If I reflect on Councilor Howarth's question first, I think the regional agenda, which is at play within Wales and actually between South East Wales and just across the water into the Bristol area, is an agenda that continues to grow in prominence. I think it's a fair point that Councilor Howarth makes, that as we move into the next council, we need to give some serious thought to how we ensure that any member that wants to stay engaged in the processes and grow in awareness of the agenda is given a relatively straightforward capability of doing that. You know, I think it's reasonable that whomever the next leader of the next council is, I think it's reasonable, for example, that we might think about sort of inserting sort of quarterly update statements on the full council agenda, because I think the significance of the undertakings probably justify that. So I think, Councilor Howarth, your points are well made. To Councilor Petruni, in terms of the scrutiny side of the agenda, I think it's fair to say, Councilor Petruni, that this is still formative. My expectation is that there will be a regionalised scrutiny functionality. And in my experience, it's not appropriate or indeed advisable to ever try and limit the scope or the remit of a scrutiny function. It's for scrutiny as to determine for themselves. But I think on this particular agenda, we, again, we probably need to give that a little bit more thought, because my experience of regionalised scrutiny is that sometimes it can work pretty well. I think it did when we were partners in Project Worth, that some of you may remember. But actually, that had the benefit of being a single issue. I think perhaps sometimes where things are more complex or complicated, there is also merit in thinking through how our own localised select committee function can continue to have an oversight in terms of these processes insofar as they impact us. Again, to be consistent, it's never been for me, and it never will be for me, to determine the agenda that our select committees choose to set for themselves across any given municipal year. But I think as the chair and those committees shape those up going forward, I think they'll want to have cognisance and afford some attention to our involvement within CJC's, Cardiff Capital Region, Western Gateway, and anything else that emerges over the course of the next two to three years. So I think, Councilor Petruni, in summary, we don't have fixed points yet. What I'd like to see here is that we play a full role in any regionalised scrutiny function, and that would not, in my view, be from the executive side of the council. And we also think about how we offer a more considered approach within our own organisation, which gives these issues the time and the attention that I think as members you will want them to have as we move forward. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you very much, Paul. Thank you. Okay, members, it's been moved and seconded. The recommendations are on page nine and 10 of the agenda pack that was sent out. There is now a vote function in the chat bar, so I'd ask members to vote, please. Okay, thank you, members. Those recommendations have been approved, so thank you very much. Moving on through the agenda to 5.3, responding to insufficiencies within the provider market for children and young people with complex needs, which was sent out as a separate addendum to the agenda. I ask Penny Jones to come in now, please.
Thank you, Chair. This report sets out a proposal to assist the council to respond to insufficiencies within the provider market for children and young people. Are you getting feedback?
No.
Oh. Okay. Can you turn it down? Sorry. I'm sorry, I'm alongside another computer and I'm getting feedback. Yeah. Okay. Sorry, I'll carry on. So, to respond to insufficiencies within the provider market for children and young people with complex needs. The national shortage of placements for children who are looked after has become increasingly prominent within public and political discourse over recent months. When there is no placement for a child, councils must try to meet the care and support needs of that child without the benefit of a regulated placement. More often than not, children in these situations have very complex needs and require specialist residential placements. Mammooshia is not immune to this issue, and indeed, officers have already had to respond to several such situations. As a council, we want to plan ahead to ensure that as and when these situations arrive, we are in the best position possible to respond effectively and promptly. This may well require the acquisition of a property that can be then used to provide a regulated placement. For this reason, I am asking council to approve the following recommendations. One, council agrees to establish £2 million borrowing headroom to enable specific property acquisition and remodelling to take place, and where the council is unable to identify suitable supply in the provider market for children and young people with very complex needs. The Chief Officer's Social Care and Health delegated power to secure accommodation for children looked after when necessary includes the ability to purchase appropriate property or land following an appropriate business case and consultation with a cabinet member for social care, safeguarding and health. Delegated authority is given to the Deputy Chief Executive/Chief Officer for Resources as Section 151 Officer of the Council, in consultation with a cabinet member for resources, to consider business cases that look to draw on the borrowing headroom for the stated purpose. The council continues to work in partnership with Welsh Government, the Anirin Bevan Health Board, registered social landlords and other local authorities, such as to secure funding and/or suitable alternative provision that would look to mitigate or avoid the need for the borrowing headroom to be drawn upon. The decision reports and business cases that support any property acquisitions made and that fall within the circumstances outlined in this report are reported into the next available meeting of the Children and Young People's Select Committee. Chair, Chief Officers for Social Services and Health, Jane Rogers, and the Chief Officer, Deputy Chief Executive and Chief Officer Resources, Peter Davies, are available for any questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilor Jones. I'll go to members who have raised their hands to start with, by going to Councilor Phil Murphy. And Councilor Murphy, can I take it you're also seconding the recommendations?
Yes, I'm happy to, Chair. I've looked very carefully at this report. This is an effective and, well, effective is the word, use of resources, and the cost of power will be offset by the cost that we would have had to pay via commissioned care. So I'm happy with it and happy to second it.
Thank you very much, Councilor Murphy. Councilor Tony Eason, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Penny, for your report. This is a very delicate situation, and you mentioned we've had maybe two or three cases within the authority in recent past. I presume that you'll be working with other authorities locally, but equally, will the persons who you've got to give the special care to still be accessible for their families? Will they be, in other words, will they be moved too far away for their families to be involved? Really, that's another my question. How do we intend to correlate the children back with their family life? Thank you.
And what a deal. I'll ask the officers to come in at the end and answer the questions at one time, if that's okay.
Can I come in quick to your next, or is that all right? Thank you, Councilor Eason. I know that you've been involved in some way with, you know, we've had some correspondence about this. I would just like to reassure you that the whole point of us having an in-house accommodation, us having in-house accommodation, would be so that the children, young people, have access to their families, to their friends, and to their education, you know, to keep them within their own area. It's a traumatic enough experience to be moved away and to be taken away anyway. So that is one of our main aims. So I can assure you that that will be done. Thank you. Where possible, I may add. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Penny Jones. Thank you. Councilor Martin Grokot, please.
Thank you, Chair. Back in the day, I used to inspect residential homes for the Home Office and Ofsted and the Social Care Inspectorate. And I have to say that on occasions, I inspected residential facilities, particularly for teenagers, where the local authorities that had placed them had, and I choose my words quite deliberately, dumped them, and out of sight, out of mind. Now, I'm not for one second suggesting that any officer or any elected member in their role as a corporate parent, if it's a looked after child in Mammooshia, would even contemplate that. But I think that somewhere written in to any arrangements that we come to would need to be some assurances that if this residential facility, if that's what we end up with, is not in Mammooshia itself, then we would never forget that child, and that that child would be subject to regular visits with parents, if possible, but organised by the county council, and that in our role as corporate parent, the county council, if it's a looked after child, is given in general terms, updates on the wellbeing and progress being made. I can remember also several London authorities using residential facilities in Gwent. And again, these children often forgot that they were basically Londoners. They weren't Welsh, they weren't Londoners, and they were like fishes out of water. Sometimes we have to act in this way, just to meet basic needs of young people. But I hope that our officers in particular will never forget that they're very vulnerable young people, particularly the sort of young person we're talking about here. They need all the help and support they can get, and that the facilities and the provision that I sometimes had to witness and report on were selling these young people dramatically short. I am confident that the Cabinet Minister will be able to give me the assurance that that would never happen to any young people from Mammooshia placed in such residential facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Grokot. Councilor Penny Jones?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Grokot. I totally agree with you. We must remember, of course, that these cases are happening now, and we are having to accommodate young people now. It is so, so important, and you have emphasised the importance, of having purpose built, a purpose-built facility whereby we have, control is the wrong word, but we have oversight of everything that goes on, that we are able to encourage and look after our young people as we do now. We have superb personal assistants working, superb teams working with them, and that would continue. But it would be even better if we had an in-house facilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Councilor Jones.
Commissioner Thomas?
Okay, thank you, Chair. I'd just like to add to that. I welcome this development. Um, I sit on, on corporate parenting. And I, I can see that, you know, not at first hand, but I certainly get, uh, the flavour of it, that obviously there are some very vulnerable children. My plea would be that as far as possible, um, young people, children are kept within the authority, uh, so that there is a better oversight in that sense. Uh, and that they're not sent, you know, outside. Personally, I, I would far prefer to have this £2 million headroom to allow the head of social services and the Section 151 officer to be able to make that decision because these situations arise quite quickly. And, and I don't think we can be in a position where we, we say, well, we've got to wait for council or CYP or whatever. Uh, some of these children are in dire straits, aren't they? And therefore, I, I think this is a positive move. But it, it has to be done properly, and I, I think the oversight, the care uh, must be there to ensure that those youngsters are properly looked after. I certainly read in, in the newspapers that in, particularly in, in England, some children, some particularly teenagers are being put in unregulated care provision. Uh, and, and they're not being properly looked after. And I, you know, I, I would be extremely unhappy if, if that were the case. I certainly know it isn't the case in Monmouthshire, but I, I welcome this. I think it's something that has to be done, but it has to be done as much as possible within the authority. Thanks.
Very much. Councillor Linda Guppy, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, um, I know we have got a duty of care for the looked after children that we are placed within Monmouthshire. However, one question is, how many children have we got, um, that are in the looked after system that are outside county? And secondly, if there's a breakdown in placement within the families that are living in Monmouthshire and, but are being cared for or they're under the care of another authority, are we going to write in, um, some kind of clause that actually they can access the service? And because sometimes with adolescents, there may be a breakdown in, um, the ability for the foster families to look after these children. However, it might be just short term. While in view of minimising disruption if these children have accessed our Monmouthshire schools in to minimise the breakdown of being placed somewhere else, um, will we be accommodating, um, the children that are looked after that actually live in Monmouthshire but are actually cared by for another authority? And bearing in mind, we have quite a few bordering counties. Um, if somebody could tell me those numbers at present, um, I maybe people will understand that it's just not Monmouthshire children that are in, living in this county.
Okay, thank you, councillor Guppy. Councillor Penny Jones, please.
Um, yeah, I'd, I'd like to bring the officer at this stage, Jane Rogers. But, but I'd just like to say that we are talking in this instance of children with very complex, children, young people with very complex needs. Okay, so if you could, um, Jane Rogers, please, Chief Officer.
Jane Rogers, Chief Officer.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Penny. Um. The, the questions I'm understanding it is, what are the questions is, would we place children who happen to be accommodated in Monmouthshire but aren't from Monmouthshire? Uh, and the answer to that is, is no, that would remain the responsibility of the, their own local authority. Um, in terms of the numbers of children who are Monmouthshire children but who are placed outside of county, I haven't got those numbers off the top of my head, but they're very easily available. We collate those on a, on a quarterly basis. Um, what I would emphasise is that some children are placed out of county because it's in keeping with their own individual needs. So they may be placed with family members outside of the county. Or it, it may be totally in keeping with their care plan that they need to be placed at a, a distance from, from the county for all sorts of different reasons related to their care plan. Um, but the numbers are easily available and I can ensure that they are provided.
Thank you very much, Jane, for that.
Yeah, thank, thank, sorry, thank you, Jane. But what I wanted to know is actually, um, how many children are looked after living in Monmouthshire from outer counties? And I, I've just wondered that, as I said, I know that it's a responsibility of the other local authorities. Um, but I think that we should think wider than this because if they're with foster parents that live in, in Monmouthshire, I know that the service, we've got a duty of care for them. But if there are availabilities and there's a breakdown in placement for these complex families, surely we should, um, be able to offer, um, support for those, those children locally on a short-term basis, just in case there could be a resolution in that placement returning to their foster families. And that may cut down, um, the amount of foster placements for these families because, Jane, you know, as well as I know, when there are complex needs, um, the amount of placements go up um, with the extra vulnerable vulnerability and complex needs per child.
Okay, Jane, you want to come back and answer that, please?
So the numbers of children who are placed into, um, Monmouthshire by other local authorities, again, I, I don't have that number, you know, this instant, but it is, it is available. But what I would say is that, that, that number that we have is caveated by the fact that we don't always know. So we don't always know from other local authorities when children are placed in our area. The children we do know about, often we find out about them because they come through schools. There is a framework in place where any child who's placed by another local authority into a different local authority, there is a mechanism which kicks into place that is, um, that, that, there's a, there's an obligation on the placing local authority to inform the home, the, the authority where that child is going to. But it's not a watertight, um, it, it's not a watertight process. So we don't always know of children who are coming into our area. So the other aspect is that, do we support children who are looked after, who are placed in our area? And the answer to that is yes. So they have access to all the, the early help and support that are available through schools. All the universal and some of the specialist, um, health resource is there to support all, all children. When a child is looked after, even if they're not from Monmouthshire, if a school is aware of that, which of course they would be, you know, that, that is something that they will take into account when they're working with that individual child. If there is a safeguarding concern that arises in respect of that child, it would fall to a Monmouthshire duty and we would investigate that and work closely with the, um, with the placing authority. And again, if there was, um, risk of breakdown of placement or particular, uh, caring situation that was at risk of, um, of breaking down. Again, it's something that, it's the responsibility of the home authority, but we would work to do what we could to sort of support the local authority in meeting the needs of their own child. So it's, it's one of those situations that case by case, you know, there can be some discussion between local authorities around how a child's needs might best be, be met, but the duty falls to the placing authorities. And, you know, we've been in that situation, councillor Guppy, you know, where we've had to have those conversations with, um, with other local authorities that we've placed children in as well. And you can get into side of, you know, more or less informal, formal sort of uh, relationships with other local authorities to actually commission or, or sort of through mutual agreement, put in, put in place services that normally speaking would fall to the placing authority. I, I hope that answers the question. In terms of the numbers, we can again make those available.
Thank you very much, Jane. Councillor Simon Howarth, please.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you, Jane, for that. And it's, um, it's nice to hear actually, um, that we're not going to be too rigid, um, if, if this motion gets passed and we, and provide a commendation for, um, those difficult, um, needy children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Simon Howarth, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Penny, for your report. And, um, thank you, Jane, for summing up on some of the questions there. And my question to yourself, uh, Penny, is, um, we're talking about children here with severe, complex needs, yeah? And I, I, I know, you know, I mean, I, I did pose a question to yourself about some of the places that we have in, in Monmouthshire, which are closed now at the moment for children who, and adults as well, but, you know, I mean, for, for, with complex needs as well, for the care, et cetera. It was going on Tony's point there of, I mean, it's going to be really difficult, isn't it, to pin a place or, or to invest in something here which is going to suit everyone. So example is, um, we look at a place in Monmouth, let's say, and, um, we have six or seven or three or four uh, cases in, in, in the Brind'acum, Abingbenni area. That means then we, we, we have that absolute force and that, that dissolves Tony's issue about trying to keep it as local as you can. I mean, so when you're saying we, we, we're going to look at something, perhaps have our own unit, our own house, our own, our own, our own, um, distribution area to, to, to look after these children, um, that's going to be really difficult. So my first, my second question then is, have we got somewhere now perhaps we may be looking at? Because to actually do all this, you could be talking planning, all the bits and pieces which would go with accommodation, uh, alterations, time builders, costing. All these things take time. So this is going to be a, a strategy of, of a long-term strategy for me. Um, it, it's not going to happen in the next probably a few months or the next six months even, let's say, with the way things are at the moment, trying to, to calculate on, 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 on getting things done. So, so it's, it's going to be a long-term strategy. So in the meantime, then we'll stay status quo with, with, with the, with what we have there. Are we catering for this? But what I would be looking for as well in all this is, is respite as well. So we may have an area in a complex where we can cater for children with complex needs. But there's a lot of children out there as well with complex needs who actually families are coping with them, but actually looking for some respite from it, who don't get that anymore now because we don't have any, I don't have any facility or we can't cater for them to have respite. So I'd be looking for a bit, bit different out of this as well. So going back to the programme of works on delivering this, I do support it. But it's a time scale for me, it's going to be, and I just want to hear, is, is this going to be long-term or have we got a place which we're actually looking at now? Which we can get up and running in the next, let's say, six to 12 months?
Okay, councillor Penny Jones, please.
Um, thank you, Simon. Uh, yes, it is long-term. It's a long-term plan, but this is the start of it. And, you know, a lot of, um, a, a lot of research will be done. There's nothing that I know of at this moment in time that's in anybody's thoughts. Oh, yes, we must do this because we must try and get this property. I, I mean, we'll confirm that with the officers, and I, I'm sure I would know about it. But it is something that we need to address. And I know it's going to be long-term, but we've got to start somewhere and today's the starting point. So I, I do agree with all you say, and I also agree about the respite care. I think that's an integral part of, of any, any accommodation.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Jones. Councillor Armin Watts, please.
Yes, thanks, Chair. Um, it was just a point of, um, I guess accuracy really. I think Jane's covered it, so I apologise, but, uh, Linda raised the point about our children in Monmouthshire, but of course, some of our children aren't in Monmouthshire. Some of them are in other counties also, and that was only my point. Sorry to be a bit boring about it, Chair.
No, not at all. Jane, did you want to respond to that at all? I think you have already, but.
Um. I think I've responded to councillor Watts's, um, point already. Um, did you want me to respond to councillor Howard's?
I think, I think it's already, I think, you know, already done. Councillor Penny Jones has done that already. Uh, so, uh, members, thank you very much for that debate, um, of those questions. Um, could we have a voting function in the chat bar, please? And members, uh, the recommendations have been sent out in the supplemental agenda. They're on page one of that agenda, um, as written. There's no need for me to read them. There's quite a few. So I would ask members to vote accordingly, please. So the recommendations have been approved. So thank you very much, everyone. Um, what I'll do now, we're moving on through to the motions next, item number six of the agenda. Uh, we'll take a 10-minute comfort break now before we get into the motions. So I'll see everyone back at, uh, 15:36. Thank you very much, everyone.
Jim, it's Dave Evans. I should say I'm not, no.
We're still being livestreamed, councillors, okay?
Okay, members, welcome back. Can we confirm if we're live, please?
Yes, Chair, we're live.
Thank you very much. Uh, members, welcome back to you all. Um, we're working through the agenda. We've got to item six, which is motions. Six point one submitted by county councillor Martin Groker. Martin.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, and members, I, I apologise for the length of, of this, uh, motion. Uh, I actually wrote it when I was not very well, as, as some of you, um, know, uh, uh, over the last couple of weeks. And looking at it now, I'm restored to good health. I, I, I think it clearly had had some impact on my brain. Uh, apologies for that. I bring this motion, uh, in a spirit of hope and expectation that every single member can agree to what I am suggesting. And I hope that politics will not raise its head during our discussions. And I certainly do not intend to raise them myself. My concern is for the predicament that many families in Monmouthshire will find themselves in, in the coming months. Uh, I, um, have an annual deal with my energy providers and for my sins entered a new agreement this month and found it was double what I was paying until the start of January. I filled my car with petrol the other day. It cost me over £50. Uh, and, um, the, 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 the national group, the National, National Energy Action, estimates that we are about to see six million households fall into fuel poverty, which at a stroke trebles the number that we have seen previously. Just to prove that I'm being non-political, I'm going to quote the Daily Telegraph. Uh, I was reading an article there which says that this year should be seen as the year of the squeeze. Stalling wages, spiralling taxes, rising interest rates and the highest interest for 30 years. Sorry, the highest inflation for 30 years. Um, and that's no mention of fuel costs there. Add those on top of all those other problems and it, we begin to realise the predicament that we're in. I actually was, was motivated to bring this motion because, um, wearing my hat as an Abigavenny town councillor, I attend the, as an observer, the Board of Mind, Monmouthshire. Uh, and there is now very clear evidence of links between poverty and an inability to feed and clothe yourself and house yourself and mental health. And there was a really powerful and quite emotional discussion about the situation that will arise, particularly following the first of April, when the fuel price cap is removed and taxation in some of its forms will rise. They're asked questions like, how will we know who is affected? How will we know where these people live? How do we know what the impact on them and their families will be when they can't afford to pay the bills? What geographical areas are most affected by what's about to arise? And it led me to think that there will be a whole lot of people asking these questions. Not least our own people. We've got excellent officers. Let me name Jude Langdon and Ryan Coleman, uh, and their line manager, Matt Gatehouse, all aware and all worried about what's to come. But we can add to that the town councils who are already helping Jude Langdon in the Money Matters campaign. We can add the police, the health board, the housing associations, Mind, Citizens Advice, and then local organisations like the advice centre in my own ward. And I was there last week talking to the administrator who said that someone that day had gone in and said, I don't know whether to turn on the heating or to cook a meal for my children today. When we get down to heating versus eating, we know we are in a sorry state. I bring this motion so that we can try and ensure that this tidal wave of additional costs to our families is minimised to the greatest extent by support that is coordinated as far as possible. So that the housing association know who can suddenly not afford to pay their rent anymore. The, uh, the, 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 the gas companies know who they are potentially going to cut off because they haven't paid their bill. I'm looking for a system in which every organisation that deals with poverty in some way comes together to answer some of those questions that I heard at Mind, Monmouthshire. Because my goodness, the people in my ward are already among the poorest in Monmouthshire. And you look at the percentage of the children who are already on free school meals. And if you double their costs for heating and lighting and fuel, and then you add on all of the costs of inflation and all the rest of it, their life is going to become extremely challenging. That's why it's not a political question in the party political sense. It's a political question in the sense of what sort of community are we living in? And I would ask all members to support this motion because basically all I'm asking is that those of us who are able to contribute and support in any way, come together in a way that perhaps we don't normally do to actually maximise our ability to get over the crisis that is about to hit us. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Groker. Councillor Lisa Dimmock, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Groker. I would like to actually second this motion. Here in Monmouthshire, we recognise the serious impact that the increases in costs of living already having on households in Monmouthshire and the potential of this to affect more people in the coming months. We know that increases in unavoidable, unavoidable costs such as fuel and utilities hit the lease well off the hardest. As these costs represent a greater part of their income and we understand the impact on people's mental health of these difficulties, we take this issue incredibly seriously and we are committed to doing all we can to support our residents through difficult times, including through the provision of local benefits, through help to claim universal credit by providing support to find work or to improve people's skills to help them in to better paid or more stable employment and through tailored advice and guidance to maximise incomes and reduce households' outgoings wherever possible. We also know that there are by no means the only organisation, we are the, we are not the only organisation in Monmouthshire working to reduce the impact of poverty on people's lives and that is vital. We work in close alignment with our partners. There is vital work going on in third sector organisations such as Citizens Advice Bureau, Mind, Monmouthshire, both of whom are active and valued members of the county's tackling poverty and inequality steering group, which is led by MCC officers. I'm very grateful to you councillor Groker for using this platform to also draw attention to the Many Matters campaign we are running here in Monmouthshire, a fantastic example of partnership work into tackle poverty, which has been developed by the multi-agency steering group and developed in partnership with many of the county councils, uh, county's town councils. One of the great strengths of the group is the ability to share data and detailed intelligence about financial hardship in Monmouthshire in real time. Indeed, the council's adopted tackling poverty and inequality action plan demonstrates a range of data that is routinely uh, monitored and shared amongst partner organisations, including food banks, benefits claims, rent arrears, housing gateway referrals and type of inquiries dealt by citizens' advice. A recent example of intelligent, intelligent use of network and data would be the work led by the Shared Benefits Service to identify and reach households which are eligible to claim the additional £100 winter fuel support payment, working with schools and social landlords amongst others. Whilst I know there is much good work already in terms of sharing data intelligence, there is of course always room for improvement and we must constantly challenge ourselves to do better. We are already gaining important insights from Many Matters campaign and I'm pleased to report that it's in its first three weeks, the social media aspect of the campaign has generated 24,000 impressions and more than 300 visits to the council's Many Matters webs, web resource. We are already using the intelligence that we have gained through the steering group to target private renters with an even more intensive focus. This is an example of the ways which we can absolutely, that we absolutely can and must use data and insights generated through this campaign and other sources to ensure that we are making the best possible use of our resources to help most vulnerable citizens. We as elected members have a vital role to play in promoting and raising awareness within our communities of the support that is available to residents and also in helping inform and target this work further to support members in this important work. So I'm more than happy to commit to regular reporting of the partnerships work that is already ongoing in this area.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, councillor Lisa Dimmock. Uh, councillor Armin Watts, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I mean, obviously you'd expect me to say that I'm happy, more than happy to support, uh, Martin's motion. Um, it's interesting, Chair, and, and it, but, but, you know, extremely depressing and, um, you know, I've been a county councillor for Thornwell for coming up to, I think it's kind of close to 18 years now. And I've seen the economy bloom and I've seen it kind of, um, dissipate. Um, my own view of this is historically, we haven't, whilst we've identified areas of poverty within the authority, I still find it very difficult to understand how anybody in senior management doesn't understand the most deprived or where the most deprived wards are in Monmouthshire. So I would ask Lisa really to ensure that there is a greater awareness amongst officers. I know that, um, members know where the most deprived wards are. Um, but, um, I do worry that, um, not everybody in the authority does. And I think that's, it, it maybe ought to kind of come from the top really and then filter down to literally, you know, the call centre. If someone says, look, I'm, I'm living in Thornwell or I'm living in, um, you know, uh, Caldecock, um, whatever, you know, that basically where there are areas, they should be slightly more kind of akin to the demographics really of, of the county. The Joseph Rentry Foundation published a report, I think it was about a week ago, two weeks ago, to say it's very disturbing statistics, for some of the most poorest families in the UK, two thirds of their income will be taken up by energy bills. How do we expect, uh, people to survive? I mean, again, I know I've used this, this phrase before, but it's almost Dickensian really. And I'm not, you might think, well, I'm just going to go off on a political tangent. Um, it is post-COVID, well, let's hope it's post-COVID. I know that we have to suffer inflation, but I also worry about the impact inflation. You know, if you remember, Bank of England said it would go, it would hit around about 2.5%, then it was 3.5%. Now it's 5%. Then they reckon by April, it could be something from seven to eight. I'm old enough to remember hyperinflation and the impact that is. I remember the interest rates going up and people chucking in their keys. So this isn't just hitting on people who are in deprivation. This will be the working man and woman, families who will suffer the most from what we will see is become, you know, a slump, possibly a depression. And I really, really worry about it. So I'm, I'm more than happy, sorry if that's rather long-winded, Chair. but I wanted just to articulate my concern about this and really make people understand what's facing us. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Armin Watts. councillor Frances Taylor, please.
Sorry, Chair, it seems to be slightly slow, the technology today. Thank you, Chair. Yes, I would support councillor Grokot's motion. And indeed, I think all of us are fearful of what the future holds. But those on low and fixed incomes, I think we've already seen seeing evidence that that's that's really, really difficult. And I'm interested, interested in the response we just heard from the cabinet member because I believe it was in November that there was a motion brought forward simply to ask the council to write to the government about their decision not to keep paying the additional uplift in universal credit. And of course, that was refused. So simply to write and express our concern, we didn't want to do that in November, but now we're very concerned. So I think it's a shame that we weren't able to write because that seems to be what we're saying today, that we're slightly concerned or very concerned that people are going to really, really struggle. I think people have always faced the choices between whether to put their heating on and whether to to put food on the table in the most dire of circumstances. But it might be useful if we remind ourselves, you know, what it is, what it is that, you know, the kind of income that we're talking about here. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Frances Taylor. councillor Roger Harris, please.
Thank you, Chair. I live in the ward next door to Martin's Ward and my council ward is the ward next door. And Martin's is one of the most deprived, if not the most deprived in the county. Mine's not far behind. And I felt that it really should be me to second this motion because of that. But I'm delighted that I got beaten to the the draw by a cabinet member. And that bodes well for us all agreeing with this with this motion. We all have a responsibility. We're going into really uncharted territory. And if we can all agree as a council that we're here to help our residents without politics coming into it, that has to be good. Anyway, I'm obviously voting for the motion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Roger Harris. councillor Dimitri Ubatruni, please.
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't going to say anything until I heard the cabinet member articulate those words. And just to slightly amend councillor Frances Taylor, the motion did pass, but with opposition votes only. The cabinet member led the Conservatives to triumph with the deputy leader, councillor Sarah Jones, led the campaign to vote it down to write, simply write to the UK government. But luckily, the opposition votes beat the current administration. My question to the cabinet member is, and my heart sinks when I hear this in any arena, let alone a political arena, when someone reads out how many impressions something made, that is not a key measure. The key measure is impact and outcome, not impressions. It's just a well-known established understanding around making impact. And I would hope before this council ends I can get a greater understanding of the impact and outcomes of our measures as opposed to impressions made. Now, I appreciate the target strategy is improved and definitely our data is dramatically improved since I started lobbying heavily in this area and I appreciate that greatly. But I just want to re-emphasise to the cabinet member, to everyone on this, it's not just about impressions and the perception of doing something. We actually have to do something and measure that so we know what kind of impact we're having to whom and to how can we extend it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. councillor Sarah Jones, please. And then we'll go to the vote.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, and I'll keep it brief. I just want to thank councillor Grokot. I think this is a highly collegiate approach, a collaborative approach to trying to tackle this issue. And I think it's a really important one that we have raised for us today. I think the work that councillor Dimmock has done in this agenda has been fantastic. It's been very forward-thinking. But I think it's right that this motion has come in front of us as a council today because quite clearly the issue and the challenges that we're facing around poverty are extremely fluid at the moment. They're coming from many different directions and it's quite right, we have another focus on that and we bring it back to the table today. I think it's great to see the value of the Many Matters campaign being highlighted in the motion. That's really positive, as well as the work that all the agencies do. And I do want to thank them all, including the housing associations, for working so collaboratively with this council on this this challenging agenda. Just wanted to mention, the motion doesn't mention rural poverty in particular. And not that I'm expecting, I wasn't expecting it to necessarily. But I think we all need to be very cognisant of the challenges, particularly in some of our rural communities as well as our urban communities. Because some of the the issues around poverty at the moment are going to face the rural areas really, really hard, particularly in terms of fuel poverty, for example. There's a lot of valuable work already going on in this area, particularly with Mind Cymru, for example. And I'm sure there'll be lots that we can report back on. But I just wanted to say thank you councillor Grokot. Well done to the cabinet member for all the work that she's doing on this agenda. And let's hope that we can work collaboratively to support all our residents in Monmouthshire. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Sarah Jones, thank you very much. Okay, members, you've seen that the vote function is in the chat bar. So I'll ask those that haven't already voted to please vote. Members, I'm delighted to say that that motion has been carried unanimously by all members. So thank you very much, members. Moving on then to item 6.2. The motions submitted by county councillor Tudor Thomas. councillor Thomas.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Obviously, the the motion is as set out there, saying that it's imperative that all select committee chairs are provided with relevant up-to-date information for their committee. Back in December 22nd or the 23rd, the Western Mail ran a story which accused MCC of having, leaving children in a vulnerable position and that they had not acted to get settled status for those youngsters to remain in Wales and in the UK as per the Brexit deal. And I must admit, I was a bit taken aback because I knew nothing about this. I'm chair of CYP. It's obviously, well, I'd like to think, an important role within the county council. And the reason I brought this motion now is I feel that all chairs of scrutiny committees should be kept informed of what's happening in all of the areas of their portfolio. Otherwise, I think chairs can be in a vulnerable position and not able to make an informed decision when something comes before scrutiny committees. So I put forward this motion to the county council this afternoon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have a second for that, please?
Yeah, I'd like to second that, please, Chair.
Thank you. Do you want to, do you wish to speak to that now, Martin, or do you?
No, I think Tudor has summed it up very nicely.
Okay, thank you very much. In that case, I'll go to members who expressed a wish to speak. councillor Paul Jordan, please.
Thank you, Chair. I think we'd all agree with the sentiment of this motion. But I'd like to amend it to include three additional words, really to clarify and to enhance the motion. And I put in the chat bar my amendments. It's really to include the word continue to provide with relevant up-to-date information, we're appropriate. So it's continue and we're appropriate are the words that I'd like to insert. And I'd like a second for that, please.
Thank you very much. Is there a second for that, please?
I'd be happy to second that.
I second it.
Okay, thank you very much. We've got two members have seconded it. So I'll go. I'll go through, this is now, this is now the amended motion which we are debating. And I will go to councillor Jane Pratt.
Thank you very much, chairman. And I obviously have seconded this amendment. But I would like to make the point that when I was first elected to this council, I was privileged to be chairman of the Stronger Communities Select Committee. And I have to say that I was at all times kept completely up to date by the officers. They were brilliant and, you know, we we kept on top of everything that was relevant to that committee and to the the issues that were raised within it. I'm a bit concerned if the motion, the original motion which was brought forward is based on one article in the Western Mail. I'm sure that the councillor who's brought this would only know too well that certainly it's impossible to at all times keep on top of every single article that goes into the news. And you certainly can't read or, you know, believe everything that you read in the newspaper, that's for sure. But from my point of view, I consider the scrutiny function to be absolutely first class in this council. And I base that on having been a scrutiny chair on another council as well. And the officers do an excellent job of keeping the chair, from my experience, completely up to date on all matters. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Just one second, please. So members, members will have seen in the chat bar that we've now got a Speak Now function for the amendments of the motion. So just to make it clear that we are now talking to the amended motion. councillor Sheila Woodhouse, please.
Yes, thank you, chairman. Just to support what councillor Pras has just said, as a current chair of Strong Communities and Jane was previously chair of Strong Communities and I know the previous chairs have always expressed that they've acquired any information that's being necessary. I've never had any issues with with anything I have requested. Officers have always come forward very promptly and responded to any request I've made. And I feel as though I am being kept up to date with with matters. So I'm just want to put that I will as a chair of a select committee at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Martin Grokot, please.
Thank you, Chair. I want to oppose this amendment. And I think that in moving his original motion, councillor Thomas summed it up very nicely in that he did not know about an important issue relating to young people who had been taken into care. And therefore, we as councillors have a duty as corporate parents, and he is chair of a CYP standing committee, to actually look at that with some vigour. And if the Western Mail is not to be believed for some reason, then maybe the Home Office is. And the Home Office also published data on these children. So why can't we as corporate parents be told? And councillor Paul Jordan's amendment talks about continue to be informed. The whole point of this motion is that we were not informed and that officers appear to have broken the law in that respect. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Penny Jones, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd just like to reply to councillor Grokot's report in particular. The cabinet member councillor Dimmock provided written answers to a series of questions from councillor Watts on the operation of the EU settlement scheme. One question that it was not appropriate to answer fully resulted in the councillor being supplied with a number of children looked after, whose applications had not been submitted on time. And the answer did not disclose details of the individual circumstances, as this would have been difficult to do without disclosing personal information. So at no point has the chair of CYP Select Committee suggested this as a topic for scrutiny, nor has a committee been denied any information in relation to this topic. There were children looked after whose applications were submitted late. It is a complex case and it would not be appropriate to discuss specific details in the chamber as this would enable individuals to be identified. The migration status of the children in question was unclear due to complicated parental circumstances. And it took some time to clarify whether applications were needed. And from my point of view, as a former chair of Children and Young People, I am intrigued as to the reason this was brought in this format because MCC is an open and honest organisation and I've always found relevant and appropriate information forthcoming. There is always an annual report from the chief officer and children's services, regular support reports are taken to select and officers and the cabinet member can be invited to attend meetings. I wasn't invited to a meeting discussing, wishing to discuss this and I wasn't aware that CYP put it on their agenda. So as deputy chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel, I know that councillor Thomas understands the importance of confidentiality and the sensitivity associated with children who are looked after. No information is given regarding individual children and young people or groups of children and young people, which could be placed in the public domain where the information could be recognised either by themselves or others. Information and data is shared, sensitive detail is not. Protection of our young people is paramount and all questions are welcomed, but there must be an understanding that some aspects cannot be discussed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Penny Jones. councillor Roger Harris, please.
Thank you, Chair. Well, wow to that. But it would have been rather interesting to see the response from the Western Mail journalist that may have phoned the chair of CYP to ask his opinion on on that particular article. And the chair of CYP is saying, I'm sorry, I've got no idea what you're talking about. So, you know, how do we overcome that problem? And, you know, if the Western Mail can't be trusted, then any of you that read the Daily Mail all I can say is, may your God go with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Roger. councillor Roger Harris there. councillor Armin Watts, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I thought that Penny might attempt to use the shout of, you know, kind of sensitive data really to try and avoid answering the question. This was, this was to give some kind of context to this and to be clear about it. So there were a number of questions I had over a period of time before, during and after the 30th of June, when we were trying to identify how many people we had in Monmouthshire that would identify a special status and effectively what would happen to the children of those those families. So for example, it's not uncommon really for them to believe that if they were born in the UK, they might think that they had settled status, which of course they don't. So the local authority had Welsh Government money to ensure that they reached out to the European Community to ensure that they were fully aware of their circumstances and to support them. But regrettably, I turned up at a town council meeting to only find then one of our officers offering that money up that was hypothecated, dedicated, designated, I should say, to ensuring these people had legal support to fund additional projects. So for example, the community fridge. So that led me to then write some more questions to the cabinet member, which she then kind of took some time to respond. She did respond to them as accurately as she could. And I was not expecting in any way, shape or form, any personal details relating to the children, to the family, for all the reasons that Penny gave. But what I did expect is an honest answer. And the answer was, more information will be forthcoming. Now, I wrote, I look at my notes here on the 27th. So I've got a response back on the 27th. It was four weeks, I think, before I got a response.
councillor Watts.
Yes.
How relative is this to the motion, sorry?
Because I'm trying to give it some context. If you're struggling to understand this, Chair, I apologize. But I am, I know you're trying to muffle me now, but if you just.
Not at all.
I am trying to.
Trying to keep it focused.
So I wrote, I got a response back on the 27th of December, but the report from the Home Office came out, I think, around about on the 10th of December. So it was clear then that that information was in the public domain. So I thought, well, why wouldn't Lisa then at least admit that this information was out there? But of course, she didn't and she wouldn't. And that was the thing that I was most disappointed about. And of course, Tudor is quite right. We don't. Tudor is quite right. We don't want to know the particular details of those children or the circumstances relating to their family. But what we do want to know is if the money has been wrongly allocated, if we've got provision and support, enough finance to support these children, if we've got the Home Office coming after them. And also what we need to know is that our scrutiny is is available to us as elected members. Now, the point, the reason why I bring this up is because all of those points, if the authority is not doing its job, if scrutiny is not working, it is in the public interest. And I and I have to say that I think that some of the scrutiny committees, according to some of the chairs, are quite silent. And I do wonder why that is. So this is why I think I wanted to provide some context to you that we weren't getting the answers. It is wrong if the local authority has broken the law, which it has had done, it's done that. And it is is interesting, is it in the public interest to know that? We're elected members. I don't know why you would want to try and shroud it. It's all no, you know, councillor Watts is trying to convey sensitive information about children. That's not the case at all, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Armand Watts for that. Members, you would have seen that there is a vote function in the chat bar to accept the amendment to the motion. So could I ask members to please vote on that now? Thank you. And just for clarity, the amendment was written or given by councillor Paul Jordan earlier on in the chat bar.
Chairman, I I did go into number seven there on the request to speak, but, you know, I mean, I I know you've gone to the vote now, but I I did put it in there.
Sorry, Simon, I didn't see it's going up the screen. Obviously, I beg your pardon for that. But we are on the vote now. Thank you. Thank you for your understanding as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so the amendment has now become the substantive motion. Just give me one second. So councillor, now we go back to this being a substantive motion to the original box, the chat box that was in there. So the next person to speak is councillor Penny Jones, please, on the amended motion, which is now this substantive motion.
Do I, I, Chair, sorry, I've just spoken, but yes, I'm quite happy to speak on the amended motion. I think the point being that when we say that we we want to amend it, it's to say continue. It means that we are, that we have been provided with the work, the the information that we request on the whole, where it is available and therefore it's, sorry, I haven't got my camera, I'm having problems with my computer at the moment. And therefore, it's important to emphasise that, not bring this in as a new motion, as though we're asking for information to be given when it is already in the arena. What I would say is that we, what I would ask is why the Select Committee wasn't called, why the Chairman of the Select Committee for CYP didn't ask for this to go forward on the agenda? Because I received no information about it and I wonder if anybody else did. I fully support the amendment, Chair, because it means that we accept that there is the information out there and we would like it to continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And members, of course, you would have put your names in the chat bar ahead of the amendment coming forward. So it's not necessary to speak, obviously, if you don't wish to. But also, I would remind members to try and be, not to be as repetitive as they can, please. So, you know, rather than rehashing the same points that we've just gone over, so we can keep that fresh.
Chair, sorry, I can't, I haven't got the option to speak again on my chat bar. I don't know why that is, but could you put me in line to speak again?
You're already in that box, Armand.
Oh, am I? Okay.
Yeah. Councillor Martin Grokot, please.
No, I I beat the gun earlier, Chair. I've made the point.
Thank you very much. Councillor Sheila Woodhouse, please.
Thank you, Chair. I I did speak earlier on on this matter, just to endorse the recommendation that it does continue, that we are all given any necessary information as appropriate when we request it. Or, you know, we we regularly ask officers to provide us with information and it's always forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Armand Watts, can you, can I repeat, just not to be as repetitive, if we can, please?
No, 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 it's it's really quite interesting, Chair. Thank you. And thank you, Penny, for being so open and honest there. Because what Penny said was she wasn't aware of it. And and this is what concerns me specifically, is that I'm not sure whether or not the legal team were fully aware of it. And it could well be, and I'm not trying to help, the fully, the officers at the time weren't conveying that information to Cabinet Members. I, my question is to the legal team, at that specific point, when this was published, which I believe was at the beginning of December, were they aware of the circumstances? They were potentially breaking the law.
Thank you very much, councillor Armand Watts. Councillor Simon Howarth, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Can, may I just convey a quick question to the the motion provider, which is Tudor, councillor Tudor Thomas, please. May I ask him a question then come back in, Chairman? Because it it is relevant because it does revolve around the motion and it revolves around the amendment to the motion on the basis of was councillor Tudor Thomas informed about the last report as Chairman of the Select Committee about looking at a investment into a into a new building and a new facility for special needs and special facility for children? Was he actually informed about that one then? I, it's just a question, because the answer is yes. That alters my way that I will be thinking. Was he informed about that as Chairman, that that report was coming to full council for any comments?
Councillor Tudor Thomas, if you'd like to respond.
No, not, you know, that didn't come to me. It obviously came in the council papers and obviously I read the council papers, but not beforehand, no.
Okay, thank you.
Not that I'm aware of.
Right, Chair. And 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 that brings to point a public Tudor Thomases and other members concerns that actually as Chairs, we we're not being notified as Chairs. And I remember some time ago there that we used to always have documents sent to us as Chairs or Vice Chairs for comments. Didn't need to go before the selects. It was always the Chairs and there was comments in there or something in the report which you were not, let's say, happy with as as Chair and you felt your committee needed to perhaps have a view of that report. I would bounce it out to every member of my Select Committee and that's what I used to do. May not be time to view the report in a in a meeting. So it was put out for comment and then you'd have the basis of then whether that report was going to full council, that report was going to Cabinet, you would then have the opportunity of responding to it. I know from the previous document about investing £2 million in taking that project forward, Tudor, councillor Thomas, was not part of the consult team, which I'm really dismayed at. So I will support Tudor on this because this is a common occurrence that we find in as Chairs. Whether other Chairs don't find that, maybe the leading groups' Chairs don't find that, they get to know about things, I'm not too sure. But I find that as an example now for Tudor, he was not informed about that report. He's just told us he did not have view of any of that document before it came to full council. I would expect him to have views on that as Chair. So that is one example of of a Chair not being informed about decisions being made by the council. That is one. And I thought we'd come to some agreement that actually all Chairs were notified and informed on their planners as well as members. We have planners as well, as we all know. We have planners that we look at and ask that if we feel that that needs to come to Select Committee, we'll go through the proper procedure to ask it to come to Select Committee. That's not always possible sometimes with reports because it may be quickly being put through. So I will support Tudor on this. I think he's right that we as members, but we as Chairs most importantly need some proper guidance on what we're going to do with some of these reports because we're not being notified about them.
Thank you very much.
And members want to go back in the, into their files now and have a look. Tudor, as Chair, was not notified about, even I wasn't notified. I I thought that may have come under me as well, actually, as Chair of Adults Select. For complex special needs children, may have come under me as cross cutting with Tudor as well. I wasn't notified about that either. So I I, and I'm going to give Tudor benefit of doubt here, we seem to be missed off for some reason. And somebody made a comment there about people not saying too much in committees nowadays. They're probably quite right there. We've just gone through a budget process and I'm sure that there was very few questions on, let's say, an £160 million budget, £70 million budget. I think it was two questions asked within the Select Committee. That is not good enough where I'm sitting here. Because if Chairs have to start asking questions of opposition parties, that is poor on the administration.
Okay, I'll move us along now, Simon. Thanks very much.
I've said my piece. You know where I'm going to vote on this one.
Thank you very much. Councillor Simon Howarth there. Councillor Lisa Dimmock, please.
Thanks, Chair. I've got to say, I'm really disappointed in councillor Watts bringing up the EU Settlement Scheme in this motion. Yes, it took time getting back to your 20 questions, but I kept responding to you and letting you know that I'm going, what date I'm going to come back to you and I come back to you. You had ample opportunity to respond to me, yet you chose to take the information and go straight to the Western Mail. I'm just appalled, absolutely appalled. It was a lot of information that officers had to gather. Thank you, Chair.
You still haven't answered the questions of you, Lisa. Still waiting for them.
Councillor Watts. Councillor Watts. Okay, I'll move on to councillor John, Richard John, please. Councillor Richard John.
Thank you. I I'm mindful of what you said, Chair, so I I won't repeat what other members have said. But, you know, scrutiny is a vital part of our our governance arrangements in in this council. I I agree that committees should be supplied with the information they need to be able to hold us to account. And that's absolutely recognised in Paul Jordan's amendments. Select committees control their own work programme and they determine what reports come come before them. When I was the Cabinet Member for Education, I felt I had a very constructive relationship with the with the CYP Select Chairs, firstly councillor Martin Grokot and then secondly with councillor Tudor Thomas. It's it's not a cosy relationship. You need, it's about scrutiny and and accountability. The, I I did note one, one point that councillor Thomas made. He said, Chairs need information so they can make decisions. I mean, there might be decisions to be made in terms of the role of a committee, but, you know, decisions are made by Cabinet Members. The role of a Select Chair is to hold the executive to account for those decisions. So we need to be absolutely clear. Select Chairs are not deputy Cabinet Members, they're not shadow Cabinet Members. They're there to lead the scrutiny function of their committee. The Cabinet is absolutely committed to openness and transparency and very happy to be invited to Select Committees at at any time. We take great interest in the discussions that Select Committees have. I I watch them back myself and I I did note there was a Select Committee a couple of months ago where Strong Communities were looking at the the Covid response and they had chief officers there. And I I noted councillor Guppy said, well, it was disappointing that 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 the leader and Cabinet Members weren't there to watch it. I can assure councillor Guppy, we have watched that committee and we have, we have noted everything that that was said. But, you know, the guidance is very clear that Cabinet Members go along to Select Committees when they're invited to do so. We, but, you know, we take a great interest all the time in in what Select Committees are discussing. I noticed councillor Watts said that the scrutiny function in this council isn't very good. And he thinks it can be significantly improved. Well, I would extend the invitation to him that if he would like to join one of the four Select Committees and actually do some of the work to contribute to the scrutiny of of this council, then he'd be very welcome to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councillor Francis Taylor, please.
Thank you, Chair. Oh, sorry.
And we shall go to the vote.
Um, thank you, Chair. Actually, I'm not, I think you've been very generous in allowing those contributions because I'm really not sure they were about the motion at all, in fact. I I think that, you know, what what I'm really kind of taken aback here because frankly, it is, you know, who makes the decisions about what we know or don't or don't know. And I think this is what this is about, you know, the addition of where appropriate, who's deciding where appropriate? If there is a key issue which is a potential risk to the council and there is an opportunity, no one is asking for personal details, let's be clear. I think that's just, you know, I'm I'm not really sure why we've had that big debate. If there is a risk to the council, then the, surely the right and appropriate thing to do, if there is something to discuss and debate and to take an approach on, is to allow a Select Committee or to to discuss and debate it. Now, you do not know what you do not know. So I'm just, you know, I think that what we hear, what we've heard today is that potentially Chairs who Chair Select, who are members of the administration, seem to perhaps have a different relationship. That is what is coming across, Chair. And I am uncomfortable with the amendments to this motion. It's a very straightforward motion and it and it's really all about those Select Committee Chairs having information to make informed, to have informed discussions with their Select Committee about what to bring forward, what is important to discuss and debate. And I and I think that Paul councillor Jordan's amendment undermines that. You know, were we aware of this risk? You know, if it was a significant risk, as is sometimes happens, perhaps that ought to come to Select. But if the Chair of the Select Committee doesn't know about it, then they cannot bring that forward. And I think it's really disappointing that we've heard all kinds of, I don't know, reasons why not to share information. You know, we all attend under the Code of Conduct. We all carry out our business under the Code of Conduct. And if we are given privileged information which is about risks to this council because of, you know, for a particular reason, then we are expected to deal with that in the right and appropriate way under the Constitution. That is not for other members or other, you know, officers to determine, I don't think. If we are a member-led authority, then it is for us to behave in a way, in in, you know, standards in public life, which means we are able to deal with privileged information and to deal with it in the most appropriate way. So I'm really disappointed at some of the contributions today, Chair. And finally, it does suggest to me that some councillors are more equal than others when it comes to information, which is a great shame and not in the interests of the county we serve. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Chair, can I have a point of order, Chair?
If it is a point of order, Armand.
It is a point of order. I asked a question of the legal team of whether or not they were made aware that we were at risk of putting the these children in jeopardy.
Armand, that's not a point of order, sorry. Okay.
Sorry, can I bring a point of order, please, Chair? I've been trying. Sorry. I just wanted to, councillor Armand Watts said, I I wasn't aware. I did say the point, I wasn't aware. Perhaps I didn't make it clear. I was, wasn't talking about the actual content of the motion. I was talking, I wasn't aware of an invitation from CYP as a Cabinet Member and I'd just like to clarify that. Thank you.
That's personal clarification. So that's very, very well accepted. So Sarah Jones has indicated that she wishes to speak in the chat bar. I missed her off the list. So we will go to Sarah now and then go to the vote. Thank you. Sarah Jones, councillor Sarah Jones, please.
Thanks, councillor Fekins. And I'm also disappointed about some of the contributions I've heard because I strongly disagree that some councillors are privy to information which others are not. When I was a backbench member and I was Chair of a committee, I had the opportunity to be party to all the information I needed. And it was my role as committee Chair to seek out that information, to develop a work programme in collaboration with a cross-party group of members who sat on that scrutiny committee. And we as a scrutiny committee were a critical friend to the council. I truly believe we were. We worked very closely together on that. And one of the reasons why scrutiny has been such a success, and I believe it has been in this council, is because we have one of the best, if not the best, scrutiny officers with Hazel Illich, who is an absolute fantastic individual and a credit to this authority and works incredibly closely with scrutiny chairs to make sure they have the information that they need. And and just to talk about risk, you know, concern about risk not coming in front of committees. There is the whole Authority Strategic Risk Register. That is something that comes forward to both Cabinet and to Select Committees. It is the role of that Select Committee to look at that risk and then to determine whether that should be on the work programme. I think there is adequate opportunity for that to happen. I am fully behind the. I think there is adequate opportunity for that to happen. I am fully behind the amended motion and I fully support our scrutiny function within this council. I think it's highly robust and I welcome the work that Hazel and her team do on a regular basis. Thanks Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Sarah Jones. Uh, councillor Tudor Thomas, I'll come back to you now to sum up as it was your motion.
Okay. Thanks Chair. Um, I, I, I'm glad this brought about, you know, so much discussion and I, I know councillor John's point about, uh, position. I'm, I'm perfectly aware, uh, having been in, in education for probably forty years, you know, how the system actually works. And I, I would say in terms of confidentiality, I worked for an exemplar for twenty years. That, that was written into my contract and I held, uh, papers that I'd seen for, you know, a hundred thousand kids. So I'm not unaware of that. I, I disagree with, with the amendment and I, I fully support what councillor Francis Taylor said. You know, when it says what is appropriate, uh, then who decides what is appropriate, uh, to, to bring to, uh, the Chairs? And I, I, I do feel that Chairs, yes, they're not part of the Cabinet, they're not decision makers, but they are, they are held to account because they, they scrutinise what goes through via the executive. And if, if you don't know what's happening in this particular case, yeah, generally, yes, I, I work very closely with the scrutiny officer Hazel Illich and we decide what the work programme is, but I, I genuinely didn't know about this until it broke in the papers. So I totally disagree with the amendment and I, I would have preferred for my motion to go through. Thank you very much, Chair Howard.
Thank you very much. And, um, a member has commented in the, um, uh, in the chat bar in relation to the voting function going in ahead of the, uh, the, the discussion, discussion finishing. Um, and so we will now submit a new vote form when the, now that, now the discussion is completely finished. So any members that have already voted, um, we, you will have to vote again in the new chat bar that is just about to come into the, uh, in, in the chat bar, please. Okay, so that vote function is for the amended motion, which is now the substantive motion and is now in the chat bar for people to vote on, please. Okay, so members, thank you very much everyone. Um, that amended motion has been carried. So thank you very much everyone for that. And thank you very much for the debate. I'll just invite our Chief Executive, Paul Matthews, to come in now to say a few words. Paul.
Thank you Chair. Members, I didn't want to join the, the conversation whilst you were in debate. That, that would be inappropriate. Um, there, there, there was a comment that councillor Graut made, uh, early on in the conversation where he, I think he suggested some suspicion of, of the council having broken the law. Um, I can't leave that, um, unchallenged, so I will pick that up separately with councillor Graut. Um, but, but that needs to be satisfied to, to everybody's, um, or certainly to my satisfaction and to the satisfaction of the monitoring officer. Based on what I know of the, the subject and the discussion and everything that I've heard, um, this afternoon, I personally cannot see any angle whereby we, we may have broken the law. So I'm satisfied that the debate has continued to a conclusion. But I will pick that up, um, with councillor Graut and, and he will have to be clear with me why he has that, um, um, position. Um, so, so I hope that that's clear to you all. It's not being passed over. I've acknowledged it and it will be, um, determined in, in some way, shape or form. In terms of the conversation that, that you've just been through, I, I think it was an interesting conversation to, to, to listen to. Um, I think it's right and appropriate to, to, to remind you all as elected members, all forty-three of you in, in a member-led council, that your constitution is approved by you and nobody else. That constitution sets out the levels of decision-making that apply within this organisation. So, so it's not a, an as and when framework that we use. It's a constitutionally approved framework. You all have the opportunity to view the council forward work programme and the Cabinet forward work programme. You have the opportunity of select committee chairs to adjust and vary, um, your, your agenda based on what you see coming forward. And in terms of councillor Howard's point, which I thought was a particularly fair point, um, let's not lose sight of the fact that the item that you considered today earlier on the agenda around, um, creating the ability for the council to act where, where there was a need for a placement. That was identified as an exceptional item, um, and brought to you as an exceptional item. Um, but it's been presented in a way that all forty-three of you could consider it together. Um, and I think that was perfectly appropriate. So I would just leave those points with you and Chair, I'll pass back to you to, to, to move the agenda forward.
Thank you very much. I've got, uh, monitor officer Matt Phillips has indicated he wishes to speak as well. Matt.
Apologies Chair, so I, I don't want to drag this out. Um, I, I, I'm obviously I keep a number, uh, uh, an eye on the number of people who are present and I'm conscious that there's some people who have not voted on the last item. So could I just ask everyone to submit their vote? Um, because I just want to be clear about the numbers given. It's, it's relatively close. If you've already, uh, clicked on the vote, if you press it again, it's not going to make a difference. Right. That, that's great. Thank you. I confirm though, there was a definitive majority there. So, so we can, we can move on now. That, that, thank you councillors. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, Matt, for that. And thank you councillors, everyone for voting and, uh, thank you for our chief exec. So we'll move on then to, um, uh, item six point three, um, which is a motion submitted by County Councillor.
Will we ask to vote again then?
No, it was just making sure that every member had voted.
Okay, righto. I thought, I think we said if we voted it, it wouldn't come, wouldn't count in a second time. All right. Thank you.
Just make sure that everyone had voted. So that's been carried now and, uh, uh, our monitor, Matt Phillips is satisfied that, uh, it's carried. So, uh, moving on then to six point three is the motion submitted by County Councillor Arman Watts. Councillor Watts, please.
Yeah, if you just take it as read Chair, um, the, the reason for this motion is, is with, I guess the, um, I guess the impending cost of living crisis and some people genuinely feeling insecure. And then I'm mindful really of the extraordinary job that, you know, that our local authority has done in protecting our community, assisting, um, you know, the, the more vulnerable people and keeping this thing ticking over um, at a time of crisis. Um, I thought this was a, an apt way of rewarding Chair, but assuring, giving peace of mind to not only our workforce, but then also the people that do, we do business with. So that's what, that was my intent. It was done with the best will. Um, it isn't to frighten the horses, uh, Chair. Um, if there are any, um, and I say this with a, um, sense of fun really. If any of the officers are thinking about going into semi-retirement, um, and, uh, looking to set themselves as a business, as an agency, uh, which is kind of commonplace really. It isn't to prevent that from happening if they want to come back to us or go to any other local authority. Uh, it isn't to prevent that at all. So not any confusion. You know, we've got some good officers that have retired, come back, whether they've used the vehicle as a limited company or not, I'm not entirely sure. It isn't to pretend, it isn't protect that, uh, to prevent that. It's simply to protect the existing workforce. Now, my understanding of it is when I, uh, and I did run this by, um, the union, they were completely supportive, but they said, uh, that we don't do it and I'm glad that we don't do it. And, um, so this was really a statement of intent that we will not do it. Now, I know it has happened in other local authorities and, um, it has been fairly controversial. There was a debate in the House of Lords about it. Um, and I think really it's been left really is, my understanding of it is for the local authorities to sort it out for themselves. But as you can see, the statement of intent is to ensure that we don't fire people off and then look to rehire people on lesser conditions, pay, et cetera, et cetera. It, the intent is to ensure that they can retain the existing, um, uh, conditions that they have, the pay that they have, uh, pending, um, future negotiations with the union or independently with this, you know, the legal representatives. The, the other issue is to do with the kind of contractors to ensure that we, you know, we're being, doing the, the right thing here to ensure that anybody that we do business with has the same values and aims as we do. And that is it Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Watts. Do you have a second for your motion councillor Watts?
I don't know.
We won't continue if we don't have a second.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Yeah, I'm happy to second it.
Thank you very much. Three, three seconds as it looks like there. Uh, so I'll then go to the, uh, chat function, which has been in the chat bar, um, to councillor Phil Murphy, please.
Yes, thank you Chair and, um, I've, uh, been researching this and I've got a statement which I shall read out now. There's no evidence, as Arman has just said, so I'm not really sure quite why the motion was brought, that MCC fires and rehires employees whether directly or via third parties. I understand that there are examples in the UK when companies have been accused of fire and rehire assaults, as they have been called, on workers' terms and conditions where, for example, companies have dismissed and then re-engage staff on less favourable terms and conditions. Thus to, to the benefit of the company's financial position and in some cases done during the pandemic where government support has been claimed. The UK government has called the practice unacceptable, but recognises that companies in financial difficulties must still have the flexibility to offer new terms and conditions. Examples have included British Gas, which had a dispute with GMB last year over similar practices. And there's also been the case of GMB and Eastbourne Council, a case which was in the news recently, which was settled after a series of strikes by GMB staff across their refuse collection services. To reassure council, MCC has not operated these practices and has no intention of doing so. We have not made any wholesale changes to, to, to terms and conditions during the pandemic and have worked hard to provide as much flexibility and control for each individual colleague throughout. MCC recognises the value of its greatest resource, its people. And there have been a number of initiatives that have evolved in the last couple of years aimed at supporting that most valuable component of our organisation. So in terms of third-party contracts, the Code of Practice, Ethical Employment in Supply Chains for the Welsh Public Sector means that we have a duty to ensure that workers within our supply chains are treated fairly and with respect. And we are advocates of that approach. I hope that we will reassure councillors, I hope, uh, that contrary to the suggestion that steps need to be taken to end this process in MCC, it is not something that happens and not something we intend on doing. We're likely of the same view of the practice as being wrong, Armand, but for the reasons I have set out, I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Watts, can I ask you to turn your camera off please, uh, whilst you're not, uh, up for speaking? Thank you. Uh, no other members have expressed a wish to speak, so I will go back to councillor Watts to sum up.
Okay. Well, uh, Phil is absolutely right. I mean, he's, he's agreed with me in as much as the, um, in the, the, it doesn't happen. And it doesn't happen. We wouldn't, you know, he says that we wouldn't do it. And, um, and if we weren't going to do it, then he wouldn't have, really have a problem. So really Phil, a typical Tory, speaks with a forked tongue. Uh, says one thing, leaves the door open in, in the event that they might need to do it. So he's putting finance ahead of the, the staff. He, I know he rebuffed this, but if he really believed in what he said, he would simply agree with it. He would agree with the unions, he would agree with the other authorities. Or he can then, you know, put himself at risk then of impending industrial, you know, if it happened, and I hope it doesn't, I really hope it doesn't Phil. Um, put himself at risk then of, you know, industrial dispute. He's had an opportunity to kind of make it clear to everybody, the public, South Wales Argus, anybody out there that's listening, this, you know, watching this, that the statement of intent is that we will not fire and rehire anybody. However, he's leaving the door ajar by simply saying we'd never do it. Well, if he was never going to do it, he'd sign up. So, you know, it's really disappointing Phil. I'm not surprised. Typical of the Tory party. Thank you very much Chair.
Thank you very much. I know that some, another member has actually expressed a wish to speak, but I've already asked councillor Watts to sum up. So I will, uh, I'm happy that the debate's taking place.
Sorry Chair, it was a point of order I wanted to ask.
Yeah, please, as a point of order, yeah.
Thanks Chair for allowing me to come. Just very briefly, given that the motion asks us to support something that doesn't actually happen, how did we get to the point where we have a, a motion on the agenda in the first place, wasting our time? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take that, uh, I'll take that, uh, outside the meeting. Um, so as the discussion, the debates now, uh, concluded, I will ask if we can have a, um, vote function to go into the chat bar, please. Members will see that that's now in the chat bar. It's your last members to vote, please. Okay, I'm, I'm happy to, um, unless the monitor officer tells me differently, but I'm happy that the numbers in there at the moment indicate that they do. Yeah. Okay. So it's been confirmed that the motion has been defeated. So members, thank you very much all for all of your comments and debate. Uh, we move on to item seven, members' question. Seven point one from County Councillor Tony Easton to County Councillor Jane Pratt, Cabinet Member for Infrastructure and Neighbourhood Services. Councillor Easton, are you happy to take that as written?
Yes Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Jane Pratt, please.
Thank you very much Chairman. And can I thank councillor Easton for his question? Um, officers had made arrangements for the bus shelters to be installed, but this has been paused to ensure the bus shelters are considered comprehensively as part of the Active Travel and Safe Route Study for the Mill Lane and Woodstock Way area. This study is looking at improving the area surrounding the schools and leisure centre, including the location of crossings on Woodstock Way, which is in fact a matter that was raised in a previous council meeting by councillor Easton. This active travel study is ongoing. An initial stakeholder workshop was held earlier this month. The draft World Tag One study is expected this week to help support our bid for Welsh Government funding in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, which must be submitted on Monday. Although this study is not specifically about the bus stops, we think it is wise to consider the location of the bus stops alongside new crossing points and other possible, possible improvements in the area. Local members and the wider community will be involved in these proposals as they emerge. Thank you very much Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Easton, do you have a supplementary?
So, sorry about that Chair, just as you said, my phone went. Um, I got the gist of it. No, I, uh, I'll come back my supplementary, uh, Chair. Um, and I don't particularly, like, like the, the tone of the end of the answers that you need to go in more consultation. But basically my question is, because responses to progress to these works have been lacking, can I request that councillor Platt takes personal responsibility to ensure that actions are taken to move them forward? I think you, you did touch on the fact that you're looking at the, at the bus shelters. The bus shelters have been located rightly, to me, in the right place, but we had no response in the last ten to twelve months. That is a concern. There's a lot, there's a lot of actions which need to have been taken in the past twelve months. Uh, could you respond to that Chair, uh, councillor Platt?
Councillor Pratt, please.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, whilst I obviously respect what you say councillor Easton, I'm sure you would agree that it's very important that we consult local residents and the public. And if we have information that comes back whilst we're doing that consultation, that makes it quite clear to us that residents in your area think that the bus stops aren't in the right place. It would be very wrong of us to have already moved them and then we'd have to move them again. So, you know, that's the reason why we need to make sure that we have all the information from that consultation before we make a decision on these bus stops, which we then may have to, you know, change, which would obviously cost an enormous amount of money to do.
I don't want to go into a long debate Chair, but this has already been done. But I, I'll go to the second question Chair.
Thank you very much. So, uh, members, we're now at seven point two. Um, question from County Councillor Tony Easton to County Councillor Jane Pratt, Cabinet Member for Infrastructure and Neighbourhood Services. Tony, are you, are you happy to take that as written?
Yes, take it as read Chair, yeah.
Thank you very much. Councillor Jane Pratt, please.
Thank you. And thank you very much once again councillor Easton for bringing this question. Um, I, I can report to you that Roger Joy and his team were on site yesterday. Um, concern, oh, sorry, it's Sandy Lane first, isn't it? So I'll, I'll cover that one, sorry. Um, Sandy Lane is a very straightforward repair and it has been already passed to the contractor to, to carry it out. So if it hasn't already been done, it is imminent. So I hope that, you know, that answers that part of the question as far as Sandy Lane is concerned. Um, moving on to the other crossing, which is in Church Road. Um, Roger Joy had a team on site yesterday and unfortunately they failed to get the beacons to work. And they may need new transformers and even beacons. So they're going to go back early next week when the transformers have been delivered and And if the lights have been blown, it will need new beacons. So what I'd like to suggest councillor Easton is that I set up a meeting between you and Roger and other officers so that you can be kept fully informed and consulted. And I would be grateful if you could let me know your availability next week so that we can organise that meeting.
Right. Thank you, Chair. I'll respond to the Sandy Lane one. I need to talk to Roger Joy about a match of one of the streetlights there, which is not right. Regarding the Sandy Lane one, it's not my ward. I believe that I'm reporting this as a motorist and concerns are put to me. This is councillor Joanne Watkins's ward, so she needs to be fully involved. I'm quite happy to be noted in the background, but it's her ward and I think that should be remaining her. If you're going to meet people, you need to meet the ward member. Not, you don't need to meet me, but you need to meet the ward member.
Yeah. Can I just, just say that obviously, thank you very much for, for that. And we will keep, make sure that councillor Watkins is kept in the loop about Sandy Lane. But if you could get back to.
Yeah, I think they're both in the ward. Yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay. So you're, the Church Road one, I mean, obviously the wards meet there, so it, we'll, we'll sort it out after this meeting anyway. But please be assured that you will be fully involved and consulted in any discussions. And thank you very much for bringing those questions to council.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. And members, we're moving on to seven point three and I am delighted that we are receiving a question in Welsh, so I thank Tudor Thomas for that. So this is from County Councillor Tudor Thomas, County Councillor Jane Pratt, Cabinet Member for Infrastructure and Neighbourhood Services. councillor Tudor, if you wouldn't mind to read the question in both Welsh and English, if you please.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Can the cabinet member clarify why the policy change has been made regarding keeping street name signs in English only and not over a period of time, providing bilingual signs across the authority? Malmesha is an authority in Wales and the change of policy will have a negative effect on the Welsh language in the authority.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And County Councillor Jane Pratt will now answer in English. And we have a translator who will then translate that English into Welsh. So councillor Jane Pratt, please.
Thank you very much, councillor Thomas, for bringing this question to me. And be assured, the Welsh language is an important part of the culture and heritage of our county. As a council, we remain committed to ensure that new street names are Welsh only or bilingual. I'm very proud of the work done by our street naming officer and Welsh language policy officer who work closely to ensure that new street names reflect the Welsh history of the area rather than being translations of generic English language street names. Our existing policy required updating, as it mentioned, the Old Welsh Language Act nineteen ninety three, which has been superseded by the Welsh Language Wales Measure twenty eleven and also contained a reference to say that we are awaiting the code of practice from the Welsh Language Commissioner to inform our approach to the translation of existing street names. To clarify, the change made relates only to cases where existing street name plate signs are damaged and need to be replaced. The update of the policy was carried out and is now fully compliant with the Welsh language standards. Some press reports had inferred that Malmesha was alone in deciding that it would not translate existing street names which are currently in one language. In fact, one of our stated aspirations was to achieve a consistency of approach in South East Wales. Alongside our Gwent neighbours, those adapting, adopting the same approach to existing street names include Conway, Denbysia, Powys and Carmarthenshire. We're certainly not watering down our commitments on new street names. And an examination of new street names can be, can confirm that this is an authority which embraces the language, culture and heritage of Wales. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Pratt. And I'm delighted that we have Mr William, who will now translate that response in Welsh for us. Thank you very much, William.
We're going to try and, and we're going to, to secure how, but in Westrood, now we're in, in East, come right, now in the East.